Welcome to the, what was normally the regular town council meeting, town of Cave Creek, Arizona, which would have been on Monday, November 7th, 2022, but we had a short meeting and moved it to tonight because there were so many polling boxes and all that equipment in here yesterday that those people wouldn't have got, let you start voting and probably till noon by the time they put it all back together. So we, we did that to do that. Uh, let's see here. Um, Becky, would you listen to the pledge? Okay, you can do the roll now. I'm out of sequence again.
Councilmember McGuire.
Present.
Councilmember Monachino.
Here.
Councilmember Morris.
Present.
Councilmember Roy.
Here.
Councilmember Sova.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
Mayor Bunch.
Uh, here. Allergies and all. Um. Under public announcements, uh, last week, a former member of this council, uh, here in town passed away. It was Susan Clancy. She had served at least one term and maybe one and a, one and a half years, uh, after, after a, um, recall years ago. Uh, she had served on the school board for, my God, as long as, as my kids went to the, went to Cave Creek schools. And it's a sad, sad, uh, sad time to have, um, have someone who's, uh, who's, who's dedicated so much of their life to, to public service to, to, to lose those folks. But, uh, we just, some people might not have known, might not know Susan. She was, uh, she was kind of a hoot. Lots of phone calls with her when I, when she was on the council and, uh, my first term as mayor. Um, I didn't do that. A call to the public.
Tom McGuire.
I will not be here for the next meeting in person. It's a Zoom meeting and the meeting after that, the new council will be sworn in, but I wanted to make sure that I had a chance to honor two of the. But next, next to my lottery ticket.
No additional speakers.
Well, Councilman McGuire, thank you very much. And I just want to say it's been an honor and a privilege to have served with you, the mayor and the other council members.
You did hear the part where you got one more meeting, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
In case something happens to me.
Town manager report.
I was going to introduce Captain Randy Kennedy and the crew from Cave Creek Fire Station Number One, uh, Regional Station 147, but they obviously got a call and thank them for coming down, uh, with the brush truck that was, uh, with the newly affixed Cave Creek Fire, uh, lettering and the new logo on the vehicle. So anyway, um, I've actually got quite a bit to cover. So I'll try to make it quick. The, there will be traffic restrictions, um, this Saturday, November 12th. There's a special event, a bicycle race, and due to that event, Cave Creek Road will have some traffic restrictions, a lane closure along the northbound Cave Creek Road from Carefree Highway to Hidden Valley. And Hidden Valley Road will be restricted to local traffic only, and those restrictions will be in place from 5:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Um, all of this information can be found on, uh, the Cave Creek website, cavecreekaz.gov. Uh, November 14th, there's a water shutdown impacting the eastern edge of the water system, scheduled to start 10:00 PM, Monday, November 14th, and scheduled to end before 5:00 AM, Tuesday, November 15th. And the shutdown may impact the eastern edge of the Cave Creek Water System. The shutdown is necessary for Ca- Carefree Water to complete work at two disconnect sites, and those sites are very close to the Galway Booster Station. And so accordingly, the area supplied by Galway Booster, um, may be, um, or will be impacted. There's a webs, on the website, there's a map of the affected area. Uh, later tonight, we do have an opportunity for the community to, um, comment on the utility rates and capacity fees, but I did want to mention that the town has set up a page on our website, um, that has all the information pertaining to the utility rate and capacity fees, including the study, all of the mail, mailers, um, that were mailed to our customers. There is a utility rate estimator for customers to see what their estimated new rates might be. And, uh, there is, um, a rate study comment form for any customers that would like to go online and send their comments in if they can't be at a meeting, or if they just want to, uh, have comments, questions, or concerns, um, that the town would be able to contact them prior to the November 21st public hearing and possible council vote. It's a busy time of year for events in the community. Um, the Saturday evenings beginning at 6:30 is the Dark Sky Viewing Event out at Spurcross, um, Recreation Area Parking Lot. Um, I mentioned the bicycle, uh, race that is on November 12th. Um, they meet in the morning and then I think the race starts around, um, 9:00 or 9:30. There's the Queen Creek, uh, Junior Rodeo Association holds their rodeo at the rodeo ground Saturday and Sunday, November 12th and 13th, from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM each day. Um, all of the information about that rodeo is also on the website. Ribbon cutting ceremony for the new playground equipment, um, that was donated to the town of Cave Creek by Desert Awareness Committee of the Holland Center through a generous grant of $39,000 from the Carefree Kiwanis. So that ribbon cutting ceremony is at Desert Awareness Park, um, on November 15th from 9:00 to 10:00 AM. Uh, the Desert Foothills Land Trust presents their 10th Annual Desert Discovery Day, and that is held, um, Saturday, November 19th, from 10:00 to 2:00 at the Jewel of the Creek. And, uh, Hidden in the Hills is coming up. Uh, it's a 26th year of the Hidden in the Hills Studio Tour. It's free self-guided studio tour that offers seasoned collectors and art enthusiasts a rare chance to observe artists at work in their private studios during the six-day tour. So those days are, um, the Friday before Thanksgiving, Friday Sat, or the weekend before Thanksgiving, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, November 18, 19, 20, and that is from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And again, the weekend after Thanksgiving, November 25, 26, 27. So we're gearing up for the busy season in the town core and around us. So that's all I have for this evening.
Carrie, for that scheduled, the water outage, will you be putting the, uh, Carefree Utility Department's phone number on our website so people can call them and ask them what's? I'm sorry. No, I'm not. Moving on to the consent agenda, uh, which is approval, the October 3rd, 2022, regular, uh, council meeting minutes, approval October 17th, 2022, regular council meeting minutes. And we have motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, sing if I'm saying hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Uh, it's clearly have it. General Agenda Item Number One, which is council discussion approval of Resolution R 2022-17, a resolution of the mayor and town councils to enter into a joint purchase sale agreement between Maricopa County, Town of Cave Creek, and Desert Foothills Land Trust, as contained within the exhibit, providing for half the negotiated total amount necessary to purchase and preserve approximately 30.6 acres for an amount of $362,500, placed on the agenda by the planning director, Mr. Councilman.
Thank you, members of council.
Point of order, Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from this agenda item.
Okay.
He's on the, on the board of the Land Trust.
Oh, you're on the Land Trust Board?
Yes, sir.
That's probably a good idea then.
Uh, Mayor Members of Council, um, back in 2019, uh, a group kind of formed to preserve Harmony Hollow, and, uh, out of that caused the town and Maricopa County, uh, with the help of DFLT, um, to solicit appraisal services for parcels in and around Spurcross Ranch Conservation Area, Harmony Hollow being one of them, uh, the parcels, uh, that are on the agenda tonight, uh, being a part of that as well. Uh, that was done in 2020 through an IGA with Maricopa County, uh, council approved Resolution 2020-13, uh, to proceed with that IGA, which, uh, the county agreed to pay for half of that appraisal. Uh, over the years since 2020, um, Steve and Lori Greenberg, I believe Steve is here tonight, uh, purchased Harmony Hollow in September of 2021.
March.
Okay. Um, which is four acres totaling 35.5 acres of, if Brian can pull up the, the map that, for agenda item one, um, council also has that. It identifies the Spurcross Ranch Conservation Area Parking Lot. It identifies Harmony Hollow, identifies Spurcross Ranch Conservation Area as well as the, uh, the five parcels subject of tonight's, um, resolution. So presently, here we are. Um, the town is serving as the guinea pig for this resolution to, uh, should council choose to adopt it and allocate half of the, uh, negotiated price for purchase of 30.6 acres. Um, the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors would consider the same purchase sale agreement, uh, at their next meeting, which I believe is, uh, the 16th, um, of November, or not the 14th, maybe, doesn't matter.
They'll do it.
I'm excited.
They're gonna do it.
This is, this is not often that, that you get to do this. So, um, I apologize. Um, at any rate, uh, what council is being asked to consider tonight is allocating funding to, um, that's not an aerial, allocating half of the negotiated rate to purchase the 30.6 acres. Um, it's been discussed what, what happens after, uh, the DFLT acquires it. Um, DFLT in the interim of acquiring it from the private property owners who they've negotiated the price with, we've gotten appraisals that are below, um, or right in line with what they're asking for it. So it's fair market value. DFLT will place a conservation easement over the property, and at such time then transfer that property to Maricopa County and the town, and we would be, uh, half owners with Maricopa County contributing the other half of the negotiated price. Um, funding for the town share of the purchase is allocated and dedicated within the adopted budget for open space acquisition. Uh, so the funding is there to, uh, to allow council to consider this expenditure. Um, as I've stated, government agencies cannot purchase property above appraised value. We have an appraised value of the property. The negotiated rate, uh, does not exceed the appraised value. And, uh, once again, just want to give credit to RJ Carden with Maricopa County Parks, um, and obviously Vicky Preston with Desert Foothills Land Trust for, um, really putting this together. And we've had a lot of phone conversations, um, over the last three years, uh, to get to this point. And it's, it's very, um, fulfilling to, to be able to do this, um, without, I'll answer any questions. I'm rambling and I apologize.
Question from council.
Mayor.
Councilman Sova.
Mr. Councilman, if those 30.6 acres were to have gone to a, uh, builder developer, uh, in your opinion, uh, excluding water and sewer from the equation, uh, how many homes could have been built on there?
The underlying zoning of the property is currently DR 190, which is another reason why, uh, DFLT is adamant about, uh, placing a conservation easement over it once they take possession. Um, so DR 190, 30 acres, six homes. Um, as council mayor may not be aware, uh, the owners of the triangle parcels, now it's, now it's displayed for everyone, um, did get into a, uh, a legal, um, issue with Maricopa County over access. Uh, the court ruled in the favor of the applicant granting them access, uh, through the park to the property. Uh, essentially, they would share their driveway with the existing, um, park walkway that you walk from the parking lot up to the entrance, um, currently. So, um, once again, six homes, shared driveway access. There, there are a lot of things about this property that, that make it desirable for the town and county and obviously DFLT to pursue.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Is it, uh, anticipated after the sale goes through to downgrade the DR 190 to open space? Since there's no other owner of it, nobody would be endangered of losing billions of dollars. Is that part of the plan to do, may turn it into open space with it than DR not 190?
Absolutely. Um, obviously, the safeguard is a conservation easement that, that would run in perpetuity. Um, but the town and county would consider absolutely, um, amending the zoning map, changing it to open space conservation.
Okay. Good.
Anything else from council? Uh, it would appear there is public comment of this.
David Phelps.
Good evening, Mr. Phelps.
Hello, Mayor. This is David Phelps, uh, Cave Creek resident. I'm very much in favor of, uh, this transaction. I'd like to point out the NGO's importance in this. We are so blessed to have Land Trust, Food Bank, Kiwanis, then get much better than this. Um, I think the conservation easement being done is crucially important because then it doesn't go into kind of the mystery vault as to what could happen to it down the road. That easement is actually more protection than if it were owned by the town or the county, um, in the, in that, that perpetuity, the conservation easement is protected, uh, by a national organization as well, right?
With your charter.
So I think we've got lots of good coverage on this, and I'm very supportive of the transaction. Thank you.
No additional comments.
No, we're back to council, man. Uh, can we get a motion? Somebody up here surely gonna give us a motion.
I'd like to do this.
But. Councilman?
Uh, this is a motion to approve Resolution R 2022-17, a resolution of the mayor and the town council to enter into a joint purchase sale agreement between Parac, uh, Maricopa County, Town of Cave Creek, and Desert Foothills Land Trust, contained within the exhibit, providing for half the negotiated total amount necessary to purchase and preserve approximately 30.6 acres for an amount of $362,500. Second.
Councilman McGuire, you had a motion comment?
There are several things that have set our community apart as being very special. For example, uh, during the 90s, deeds were sold to the top of Black Mountain. They weren't truly deeds. Actually, they were contributions to hire a lawyer to transfer that land from federal ownership to become a Maricopa County park, and it will forever preserve the top of Black Mountain incorporation, uh, Spurcross. All of these are things that have defined Cave Creek as an extremely special place. Uh, I note that in the last 20 years that we've been here, this little town of Cave Creek has made the New York Times four times, and I think it's deserving of that credit. It's, it's a great success. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Uh, the only thing that I would say in this is that with the, uh, preservation of Harmony Hollow, this is one step further to preserving that area from inappropriate development. It's, it's a wise decision for the town to make.
I was pretty sure you wanted to say something too.
I would like, thank you, uh, to, um, thank, personally thank Vicky Preston and Luke Councilman for their extraordinary effort to get this done. It's taken quite a while, uh, probably a year or more. Um, and it came to fruition and we are very fortunate. And also, our community is, um, very happy that we're appropriately using the sales tax dollars that were set aside for this purpose. So congratulations, Vicky and the Desert Foothills Land Trust and our staff for their extraordinary work.
Don't get excited. We hadn't voted yet. Any other comments from council? I just want to take the opportunity to say that there's very few things that we as a body can do that are going to matter 100 years from now. This is one of them. Vote please. All those in favor of the motion. Oh, wait, it's definitely financial. Now we're going to find out if everybody's really behind it or not.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Councilmember Roy.
Yes.
Councilmember Sova.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire.
Absolutely, yes.
Mayor Bunch.
Uh, yes. Oh, yeah, you weren't. Okay. Sorry, Reg. I was looking at you. All right. Looks like it passes 6-0, which is a really good thing. We'll move on to agenda item number two now, which is, yeah, we're all excited. We should all go across the street and have a drink, forget the rest of the, rest of the meeting.
One more, one more.
I'll listen to you. All right. Agenda number two, council session approval of Resolution R 22, uh, 2022-18, a resolution of the mayor and town council to enter into an agreement of a ground lease and premises lease between the Foothills Food, uh, Food Bank, FFB, and the Town of Cave Creek, TOCC. And once again, Mr. Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor Members of Council. Um, council back in May approved a, an MOU with the Foothills Food Bank, uh, between the Foothills Food Bank and the Town of Cave Creek to explore an opportunity to, uh, enter into a ground lease and premises lease with the Foothills Food Bank out at the wastewater treatment plant site. Uh, that map is up, uh, for you to see. And, uh, thank you to Sean for taking, um, the Foothills Food Bank drawing and overlaying it on the aerial, uh, for us to kind of give us an idea of where, where the, uh, where the proposed work, uh, should council approve, uh, these agreements move forward. Um, so prior to the MOU coming to council, uh, Lee Zidonic with the Foothills Food Bank, uh, asked to schedule a meeting with me to consider different areas of town that might be suitable for the food bank to, uh, expand their, their operation and service area. Um, they had looked at areas within the Carefree Highway SAP. They had looked at parcels adjacent to Tractor Supply Company, um, parcels within, uh, Area 18, behind Tractor Supply Company in and around those areas, um, understanding that they would have to acquire the property, rezone the property, and then develop, um, their, their buildings. Being a, uh, crazy planner that I am, I, I learned from my predecessor, uh, there's really no bad ideas until you, you work it through and see how far it takes you. Um, I, I offered that, uh, staff would entertain looking at this piece of land, um, that is currently unutilized by the town. There are no future plans, uh, for expansion of our, uh, wastewater treatment plant into this area. Um, we decided to enter into, to talks about the feasibility of that at such time, and MOU was prepared and brought to council to, before food bank started spending money and actually researching whether it was feasible on their end. Um, what you see tonight is the culmination of that effort with the MOU, uh, basically, uh, preliminary outline of, of where their structure would go, their facilities. You see the, notice the big orange box. Um, I had had a question about how much does the, will the town pay for this? Uh, the agreement, the lease agreements before you, uh, the ground lease and the premises lease is basically a net zero for the town. Uh, we've determined that the value of the town, um, is, is substantially equal to the value of the building that they would be, uh, building for the town for use for public works and utilities, office and lab space and other things. Um, and then we would lease that back from them at zero cost over a long-term lease period. So really, this is an opportunity for the town to, um, vacate an existing modular building, which you can kind of see, um, over on the right there with the, with the cars around it. Um, that is really substandard for what the wastewater treatment, um, plant operators need to, uh, test and, um, I don't know all the terminology, but, um, to do what they need to do. So this, this gives the town an opportunity to have, um, dedicated office space and lab space for them to operate, uh, the wastewater system. And in exchange, the, uh, Foothills Food Bank has the opportunity to be on a, a major thoroughfare, um, conveniently located to continue to serve the 225 square mile radius that they, that they do for the community. And, um, we've, you know, the, the town has always thought of the food bank as a, as a great and reliable partner. Uh, the food bank is also trying to, uh, attract other similarly, uh, goal-oriented nonprofits to that area. Um, and we'll see, we'll see what comes of that in the future. But at this point, uh, what's before you is, uh, approval to finalize the, the premises and ground lease for, for the food bank. I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Mayor. Councilman Sova. Oh, wait. Question from council? Councilman Sova. My microphone wasn't on.
Mr. Councilman, uh, did I understand you correctly that the offices or the building that the, uh, that's currently being used, uh, by the wastewater plant will, will be abandoned? Or will it still be utilized for something else? Or is it going away?
Are you looking for a deal on a double wide? I think we'd have to put it to auction.
By the way, inflation is going, hold that thought. Yeah.
Well, if, um, we're anticipating, I'm looking at Lee and Lori with the food bank, we're anticipating about a year to 18 months. So whatever the termites leave.
The trailers will leave.
Correct.
So every, the operation will be 100% housed in the new facility.
That is correct.
And then I think at the previous meeting some time ago, uh, I think the answer was the food bank will be selling their existing building and using this exclusively, correct?
Yes, that is, um, that is one, uh, pro that I did, did not mention in, in my report is not only are they, would the food bank not be taking as a nonprofit, a commercially viable piece of land in and around the Carefree Highway Cave Creek Road intersection, but they would also be freeing up, um, for a commercial enterprise within the town core, if, and out of their existing building. Yes.
Thank you.
That is a commercial buffer, if I remember correctly.
That is correct. Yes.
Anything else from council?
Mayor.
Councilman Monachino.
Uh, Luke, do we have any, uh, financials from the food bank?
Financials in, in what regard?
Income statement, balance sheet.
Um, no. No, sir.
Okay. I noticed also that the, um, food bank will have the right to sublet. Okay, was that ever, did they request that or is that just standard language or?
Yes, so as I stated, um, they are trying to recruit, and I, I don't know how is this? Okay, uh, organizations like, uh, caring corps, um, other organizations in, in that manner, trying to attract them to this facility as well. So it's almost like a one-stop shop for, for nonprofits that are similar, similar mission. So yes, they, they would be subletting to other agencies potentially.
Hmm.
Should we run a program, uh, certain seniors that we work collaboratively with caring corps?
Yeah.
Actually, you're gonna need to go up and talk to that little microphone with little red light on it. That's why I'm asking you to do that. I'm really hard hearing.
My name's Lori Olson. I'm the president of the board for the food bank. Um, the organization that we're talking to right-
The organization that we're talking to right now is Karen Core. We have partnered with Karen Core for I think a year and a half, Lee. Yeah, quite a long time, but it's, it's been a huge source of, of growth for us in terms of number of clients coming in. We're thinking that we would share office space, share a kitchen, share conference room. At, at no gain to us, which they've, they've kind of found hard to, to believe, but we have nothing to gain other than it's been a really strong partnership and we'd like to continue it. So that's, that's what that is.
Should we have something in the, in this agreement that specifies that sublet to nonprofits? Rather, rather than a hamburger drive-through?
But that's actually a great point, it's not permitted in that zone, so that couldn't occur.
Okay.
It's, yeah, it's, the, we, we purchased, the town purchased that property from the state land department expressly for public and community service and utilities being one of those.
Okay.
I, I did want to offer to the council members, if you would like to, to really get into the details of what we're planning and everything, Lee and I would be glad to make ourselves available at the food bank. You could see our operation, we'd be glad to go through the plans in detail and, and really show you whatever, whatever you'd like.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anything else from council? There's public comment on this one as well.
David Phelps?
Good evening, Mr. Phelps.
David Phelps here again, as you know, I supported this originally. I think it's moved a little bit, grown a little bit. Are we still looking at the original square footage for the food banks, buildings, Luke? And that is, that number is?
Yes, the square footage has not changed. It's about 15,000 square foot total with the town's portion being just under 28, 2,800 square feet of that 15,000.
So we're somewhere near the 18, I think, those original discussion of their needs.
It's actually a little bit below at this point, yes.
And again, with the NGO's help, the town is doing like a classic Kramer move here, they're just kind of landing on a new building for the sewer plant to utilize, which is great. Very much support this effort. Hopefully it is as successful as all the energy it's taken to get it this far and congratulations.
Thank you.
Is that the only word?
No additional comments.
Alright, we're back to council for motion, please.
I'll make it. Motion to approve resolution R 2022-18, to resolution of the mayor and town council to enter into an agreement of the ground lease and premises lease between the foothills food bank, FFB, and the town of Cave Creek, TOCC. Second.
Comments?
It's a good deal.
Yeah, yeah. You had the second comment?
It's a good deal.
Councilman McGuire's got his hand up like he wants to talk to us. He, he, he's going to be more active tonight because he's got a cousin here visiting, I think he said from Rhode Island. From Delaware.
All the way from Delaware. The food bank has, has been a tremendous asset to the community. I, it's, it's become more clear to me over the years how people can fall into a trap where they need help. And the fact that there's someone who helps them is very important. And for the town to take part in the, the, the service it's provided for humanity is, is just a tremendous thing. I'm, I'm so proud of the town and of the work that the food bank has done over the years. How long have you been serving Cave Creek?
34 years.
Yeah. Great organization. Thank you.
Councilman Monacino?
I've worked with the food bank over the years. Pam and I, in her annual drives and we were successful. The food bank is a feature of Cave Creek. 30, 30 years, just like the museum. It's part of Cave Creek.
New York Council? Alright, this is a net zero, but let's go ahead and do roll call on this one as well.
Councilmember Morris?
Yes.
Councilmember Roy A?
Yes.
Councilmember Silva?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Monacino?
Yes.
Mayor Bunch?
Uh, yes, motion passed, so I guess Luke and I are headed out to. They're not going to let me leave after all. Item number three, presentation by Maricopa County Sheriff's Office in MCSO, with focus on traffic enforcement and summary of arrests. I recognize that guy. He, you've been here a long time, I can just station.
Long, long, long time.
How, how long now?
So I started in 2000, so 22 years.
Yeah.
Give or take, I've been to a couple of different places throughout the years, but the majority's been here. Long time. Mayor, members of the council, good evening, Mr. Morris, congratulations on your newly elected office.
Others too. So some of the audience, I think.
At least one.
Congratulations, members of the Cave Creek community, good evening. So I'll just go over the snapshot of what we provide each month to the town in the form of a town report and I just spoke with Marshall Stein about this. You don't have a copy of the statistical report that we provide to the town? Okay, so I'll just give a category snapshot, if there's any questions that I can answer, please let me know. So the way we break it down, and this is specifically for Cave Creek, of course being a contract town for the sheriff's office. My name is Ryan Varanios, by the way, I'm the deputy commander next door here. So we have the top 20 calls for service, the top 20 on view, top 20 calls for service with incident reports. We have the top 20 calls for service, top 10 on view, on view with reports. And then we break it down by traffic as well. So I have for the last two years stats, if you need me to answer anything specific related to crashes or citations or criminal activity, anything that has to do with law enforcement, I'm happy to go over that because this is quite comprehensive and we could be here all night talking numbers. So if there's anything specific that I can help answer or perhaps any trends, which I'll kind of answer my own question there, there typically are too many trends in Cave Creek relative to public safety. So I can kick it off with that, but if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer any of them.
I see Vice Mayor reaching for his button.
This is a quick one. I saw on the news that the sheriff, Penzone, has been shown to be, at least by the court, in contempt. The last time this happened was with Arpaio and there were procedural changes that took place in the way that the police department operated. Is this going to have a similar impact? Which I think some of us here deem were over, overzealous in controlling the police from doing their job?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I appreciate that. I, I can only speak to what I know and what I know is basically what was been broadcast on the news. The Maricopa County Sheriff's Office is under a court order, a federal court order, with a court monitor team that overlooks the activities of the sheriff's office, you are correct. The most recent one that was broadcast on the news, again, this is public information, was relative to internal affairs cases not being done within the prescribed timeframes by, by the judge. And with that, with a lot of different things, we have to allocate resources to comply with the federal court order. Truth be told is we compete with a lot of different agencies within Maricopa County and the metro area and even outside the, the metro area for bodies. And so it's no secret law enforcement's hurting on the recruitment, retention and succession front, without a doubt. Does it impact this particular area, I think is really what your question is? We are able to deploy our resources according to what we are given by executive command downtown, meaning we are allocated a certain number of sworn personnel to deploy out to the streets. One of the good things recently that happened is we no longer have to respond out of the substation with regards to investigation callouts. Now we have a centralized detective corps that comes out of the downtown area and it's dependent upon the category in which the crimes being investigated. For example, property crimes, people crimes, whatever the case may be. The sole focus up here in the substations, which of course covers Cave Creek among many other communities, is patrol. And so with the resources we're given, we're able to deploy those resources. What's an adequate number, I don't know. What I do know is we fulfill the contract obligation that we have to both Cave Creek and Carefree. With the amount of money that's paid per the contract, we deliver those resources. In addition to those patrol deputies, we also provide at no additional cost to the town, we give you a bomb disposal unit, we give you dogs, we give you a SWAT team, we give you the helicopter, we give you a command, we give you everything that goes with a full-fledged law enforcement agency is exactly what we are. So does it impact us? I don't know. I don't know if it impacts us because again, what's an adequate number to serve the community within Cave Creek, Carefree, Desert Hills, Anthem? Heck, we even have some areas down in Paradise Valley that we're responsible for. So we're stretched thin is the bottom line, just like everybody else is. But we always staff this area because contractually we're obligated to do so. So you'll never go without a deputy sheriff in the town. And so we do our best to cover all the square miles we have in the area and it's a long-winded answer, but I'm trying to answer the best of my ability to serve the community with the appropriate amount of resources that we have. And so that's just, that's where we're at now, I don't know if it hinders us, I, I don't have an answer to that because we're so large. We have a lot of different areas in addition to the sworn enforcement side of the house. We also have a jail side to worry about, we have a civilian side to worry about. Again, the captain and I deploy resources based on contracts and based on calls for service and where we need to deploy those resources based on crime trends that we see.
Thank you for your appropriately delivered response.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Councilman Morris?
Start with a question. How, how many deputies work out of Cave Creek?
So at last check, we have right around 50 total, but that includes admin staff, that includes our deputy staff, that includes sergeants, lieutenants and a captain. That number fluctuates depending on needs and other places within the agency. We have approximately five to six deputies on patrol at any given time. And in addition to that, you also have a patrol sergeant that's always on duty as well and that's per the court order mandate. There's always a sworn supervisor on, in addition to that, then I also supplement the squads when I'm at work as well, as you could see, I wear a uniform and I go to work. In fact, Marshall Stein, I don't know if he briefed you, but just a couple hours ago, we were rolling on around, rolling around in the ground fighting with suspects. So I'm not afraid to get my hands dirty, I go to work and this happened, he's telling me just outside of Cave Creek town limits, but I beg to differ, but just because I, I like giving them. But nonetheless, nonetheless, I hope that answered the question. That's about what we have, anywhere between 45 and 50 folks at any given time for this, this particular area. Again, this serves Anthem, Desert Hills, New River, Cave Creek, Carefree and then south of Carefree Highway as well.
Yeah, and traffic, of course, is, is the hot button, the hottest button in, in, in town pretty much consistently. And I think there's been a, a, and I appreciate, there's been a noticeable increase in the presence of sheriffs and I've also seen a number of traffic stops recently that, well, in the last six months. And so I, I appreciate that, I think that's, I think our, our residents will appreciate that. Could, since we have no data here, can you give me some idea of what the trend is in, in traffic? Are we still going up, down, sideways as far as enforcement?
So with regards to speeding citations or traffic stops related to speeding, by context in 2020, we had 222 of those and Cave Creek specifically. 2021, that number dipped to 183 and this year alone, we're up to 302. So as to your point, there is a marked increase and the stats here back it up. DUIs, we had 13 in 2020, we had 12 in 2021 and we have so far this year six. So we're, you know, holiday season's coming up, so I'm sure those numbers will probably go up as well, but we're on, we're on point with where we were before. With regards to, I could break it down by monthly if you need to as well.
No, that, that's fine, this is funny good.
Okay. Yeah, and I, I could break it down by subcategory as well, the speeding is usually the hot button topic like you mentioned.
Speeding.
Yeah, speeding, reckless driving, that sort of thing. Of course, we have a whole lot of non-moving stuff too, registration, insurance and that sort of thing too.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Monacino?
Deputy, would you comment on your drug enforcement program and status of drug culture in Cave Creek?
In Cave Creek?
If, if any.
Yeah, that's almost non-existent, sir. In Cave Creek, we don't have a marked drug problem per se for that, that draws the attention of our resources. Now, the sheriff's office does, has, does have what's called a special investigation unit, that their sole focus is drug activity. But in this area, we're not seeing large quantities of drugs being moved through town. I think a big part of that too is the dead end as well, we're not on a main thoroughfare in terms of interstate and things like that. So I hope that answered your question, but we don't, we don't have a drug problem in Cave Creek and I'll, I'll be the first one to attest to that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Silva?
Quick question, homelessness in Cave Creek. Is it virtually none or very little or any trend that you can see?
As soon as you ask that question, Anthem, believe it or not, has had, and I know it's of no interest to Cave Creek, but just by comparison, because I work in this area, Anthem has had a little uptick and I think the proximity to the interstate probably is, has something to do with that, I'm guessing. Cave Creek, no, there's not too many issues. I know that Marshall Stein is out running around and doing his thing and we support him in his mission as well. But if there's illegal camping or anything related to town ordinance, it's a cooperative effort between the two of us, the two shops to work together on that. But to answer the question, no, I'm not seeing anything regarding homelessness in Cave Creek. Thank you. You're welcome.
Anything else from council? Is there, is there a place that we can go and look and, and look at the punitive restraints that the federal court has you guys under right now? I mean, I, I would hate to have to be in your position because I know the IA cases are because just somebody says, hey, he, he looked at me funny.
We, the way the policy is written, Mr. Mayor, is any allegations of misconduct have to be investigated. So it takes a lot of the discretion out of supervisors making decisions as to whether or not there's actually misconduct at hand. And we have body worn cameras, every deputy's issued a body worn camera. And in a lot of different ways, that helps us make decisions as to whether or not we're legitimately looking at misconduct versus somebody who may be articulating a perception complaint versus actual wrongdoing. However, however, the court is very specific in saying that any allegations of misconduct will be investigated. As soon as that's launched, it turns into an external complaint, which then starts a process. And these cases are very complex, very complex, very time-consuming. In fact, I'll share with you that just recently, the internal affairs cases that the district was given to investigate have now been removed from all substations, meaning that district command no longer has to investigate allegations of misconduct. Everything is automatically now sent downtown to our professional standards bureau and then that cadre of investigators, then that's their job, that's their sole focus. So it's taken a heavy lift off our shoulders because we were really bogging down our first line supervisors with a lot of these investigations. And when you have them bogged down like that, that means they're not out there in the road coaching, mentoring, directing, supervising and what have you. To answer your question, yes, MCSO.org spells out the court order. All of the information is there, all of our policies are there with regards to what it is that we're facing. It is definitely an uphill battle, it's very time-consuming, very expensive. So we are in a very difficult position with regards to who replaces me when I walk out the door. Who's coming in behind me to take my job in law enforcement in general? And this isn't specific or special to Arizona, this is across the country as everybody knows. Everybody's fighting for bodies and you're seeing a change in the wave of folks that aren't interested in law enforcement anymore, they're just not. And now they've changed our pension in Arizona. Thankfully for me, I'm grandfathered in, but they've now reformed our pension. So there's not a whole lot of enticement to want to carry a loaded gun to work and have to put on a ballistic vest. It's, it's not appealing to a lot of folks these days.
Let, let me make a statement that you can't. I think it's ridiculous that law enforcement, Maricopa County is, is constrained to the point they are by the federal court. Is still Judge Snow?
It is.
It is. It, some may recall that some time back, we did a non-binding resolution to him and asked him to, to please take a look at, at what he was doing to law enforcement, because they can't be as effective doing their job when they've got a, a monitor, so to speak, that's watching them whose main, main goal in life is to continue to be a federally paid monitor. So as long as he finds things wrong with the sheriff's department, he, it's job security for him. He's going to be looking for stuff, we're, we are. We're, we are absolutely being constrained by a ridiculous federal government that is, that, that really. The, the problems now are, are, are not what they were. MCSO is, is behaving much better under all circumstances. And I think it's ridiculous that federal courts are still, and, and the, the federal government has still got their thumb. As hard they do on, on, on the Maricopa County Sheriff's Department. That's my soapbox for the evening. There's public comment on this one.
No one wishing to speak.
We have none. Well, I want to thank you for showing up. You want me to take a picture of you and send it to the sheriff?
I got it.
This is being livestreamed anyway, so.
I got a, I got a cell phone on here.
Okay, I have my body camera.
Nobody, thank you.
Item number four, presentation quarterly financial report placed in your number by the finance director.
Mr. Mayor, before Shirley begins her report. As I've announced to the council and publicly would like to announce that Shirley will be retiring early in December. And this is probably your last opportunity to see her unless you come by town hall. And we want to thank her for the service to the town of Cave Creek. And wish her well in her retirement. Secondly, we are fortunate enough to have staff that has the. Education and the experience and the ability to step up and fill not only Shirley's place, but then. One, before Mitzi. So I'd like to introduce Mitzi. This is Mitzi Callow. She is our accounting manager. She's a very experienced CPA and has been working closely. With Shirley over the past few weeks, and she announced her retirement and has been with the town for now a year and a half. Yeah, a year and a half, going on two years. Yeah, so we're fortunate for her to be able to step into that position. And not here this evening, I don't think, is Bridget, but Bridget is working with Mitzi, and she will move up into Mitzi's position as the accounting manager. So again, we're, we're very fortunate to have a good group of people.
So counsel, this is your last opportunity to be mean to your.
I'd like to say something. Not to be mean, but.
Well, okay, go ahead. We hadn't heard a report yet, but go right ahead.
Well, no, but I just wanted to say, since Ms. Fox has been here, I found her reporting to be heads above. Anything we've received in the years previous, and that your accuracy, the reports were clear. They were easily understood, and if there was an item that you didn't understand, you said that and got back to us. And I for one just wanted to thank you for a job well done and good luck in the future.
Thank you.
After that great reception, you're gonna leave anyway.
Good evening, Mayor Bunche and Town Council. Tonight I will be presenting the first quarter financial report for the current fiscal year twenty twenty-three. The dashboard type financial reporting is a standard that I've used often in the past. I have found that this way of reporting improves the readability of financial information. And will communicate the activities of the town in a clear and transparent way. I know I've been here all this time, but I wanted to present the financials for the first time this way. With the budget that was written from my office. So this is the second piece. The budget was the first piece. This is the second piece. This is how I found best practice in traditional reporting of financial information that works very well. So I'm going to go through this tonight, and it's, it's new. I've designed these reports to be specific to Cave Creek. General and enterprise funds, so that the revenue and expenses can be easily compared to budget. The other funds have been summarized and all the debt obligations have been charted. The graphs are intended to be used in the future, and they will allow Mitzi to go forward in twenty twenty-three quarterly performance. And track those to the budget and prior quarterly in the year. So historically, she'll be able to take these reports and move forward. The dashboards can be expanded to include additional financial indicators as needed. And to track and compare information year over year. My goal is to provide the town manager and directors a financial reporting tool to best a system in their various managerial needs. This is the general fund revenue slide. The general fund revenues in the first quarter were one million nine ninety-four, one forty-five. Or sixteen point four percent of the annual budget, reminding that at the end of the first quarter, we are at twenty-five percent through the year. The black line on the graph is the budget and the blue bar is the first quarter revenue. Breaking it down by the revenue types, we see that the local tax, which is the sales tax, is only at thirteen percent right now. This lower percentage at this time of year is usual, and the timing of sales tax collection lags behind in the first part of the year. So the sales tax normally during the year, you're getting prior months as they come in. And so it's a little bit elevated, but at year end, we reconcile the sales tax and we post them final in the prior year. So the first month of the year, you're seeing just a little bit that starts to come in from the timing issue. And then as the year progresses, you'll see it catch up to itself. So this is a usual look at sales tax at this time of year. Sales tax is the only category that's lagging at this time. Comparing the first quarter of last year, you may ask, well, how are we doing compared to last year with the sales tax? Collections this year so far were eighty-seven thousand dollars greater than last year at this time. So as a comparison, we're doing a little better. We're ahead of schedule. Miscellaneous revenue is another outlier in this report, and it's well beyond budget. And that's due to an insurance recovery for the damage at the rodeo grounds. So it's unexpected revenue. It's in the miscellaneous category. And you'll see that carry through the rest of the quarters because it will stay there and it wasn't budgeted. The pie chart on this slide shows the breakout of the taxes by type with local sales tax being the greatest portion. Are there any questions about general fund revenues? General fund expenses. This chart shows expenses by department. All departments are trending about two percent below budget with the exception of the fire department. The percentage spent in the fire department is forty-six point nine, and this is due to the Daisy Mountain contract. The Daisy Mountain contract is paid quarterly in advance. So by the end of September, that contract had been paid for fifty percent of the year in advance. So you're seeing an elevation in the fire department due to the nature of how that contract works and that its payment is in advance. Overall, the general fund expenses are twenty-two point seven percent at twenty-five percent through the year. And you see that data in the far right corner of the chart. Are there any other questions about general fund expenses? This next slide describes the other funds. The Herf Fund, the highway user fees. We have fifty-six thousand, six hundred have been received and no expenses have been made in this fund yet here to date. Spur cross, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand of local taxes have been collected. And the Maricopa County contract has been paid fifty-four thousand dollars as budgeted. So we've paid our contract twenty-five percent. So that's just what goes through spur cross it at this time. So that's all normal. The grant fund has had no activity at this point in the fiscal year, so no revenues, no expenses yet to the grant fund. And the capital projects expense in the first quarter for the general fund, we've had no activity on the capital projects in the general fund so far this year. Any questions about the other funds? Making it easy.
One question, you, this says that the fund received no revenue and had no expenses to grant fund. And we just spent two million dollars out of the grant funds. How does that work?
Well, we could call it spend, but it really was transferred, and it was transferred to Cave Creek Water. And when I get to Cave Creek Water, you can see that part of the Phoenix Interconnect has begun. And those grant funds are being used over in the Cave Creek Water for the Phoenix Interconnect.
Okay. At the previous page where you have the operating department expenses. There's about almost five million dollars additional for the Phoenix Interconnect. But that's not reflected in that rundown. Is it, where, where is it reflected? It can't be in, in the Cave Creek Water Fund. Because that fund doesn't have that amount of money.
It is in the Cave Creek Water Fund, and it's in the capital projects inside the Cave Creek Water Fund as budgeted. So it's below the line. If you look at the, the larger budget, it's below the line, and it says transfer to capital. But the auditor's recommended for the enterprise funds that I do not transfer for capital, and I keep the capital expenses within the fund. So it's budgeted there and below the line. If you want me, I can show you on the budget where it shows. All of the capital projects for each of the funds separate on the bottom of their funds.
Okay, I understand that it, it shows up in the, in the capital part of the water system. However, there's not enough money within the enterprise fund. To pay that extra five or so, a little less than five million dollars. That is actually coming from the general fund, right?
It came, two million came from the grant fund.
Two million from the grant fund and then.
And there's some in the Cave Creek Water Fund. And there's, we anticipated two million to come from another grant fund that didn't arrive. And that's there also, but it didn't arrive. So we have permission to spend.
So there's another grant that's anticipated?
There was, there was. That was a congressional grant. So when we wrote the budget, we had all those grants coming. And then we moved the state and local fiscal recovery funds into Cave Creek. If Sean is able to spend more than what's over there and budgeted and available to him in the next six months, I would be surprised. If that occurs, we will definitely report to you.
I know you can't make something out of nothing. And the, what I'm trying to say is that the Cave Creek Water System way of. Gaining income does not accommodate that almost five extra million dollars. That, is that going to be moved from the general fund? An, an, an designated money, not designated for this purpose, that purpose, or any other purpose. Moved in to pay for the interconnect.
No.
No.
We will apply for the WIF alone, which the application is in process. So that's the other funding source that's in the budget also is the WIF alone, and that's for nine point five million. So we're well above.
Okay, you solved my, my little problem for me. F W I F A. So, so that's, that is going to be totally within the. Within the Cave Creek Water System budget as it should be. So it'll be paid back with the almost nonexistent increase in water rates.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so moving to the enterprise funds. The enterprise funds wastewater, Cave Creek Water, and Desert Hill Water are each presented in individual charts and graphs. This is the wastewater chart. The wastewater, we did not collect, we did collect our normal service fees. However, there were no new service connections in Desert Hills in the first quarter. And that's a result of your twenty twenty-one water policy. So in light of that, it reduced the capacity fees and revenues are below budget at fifteen point eight percent. So there's a set of revenues in that number, but it's low like that because the capacity fees did not occur. Because the water policy did not allow connections in Desert Hills.
Are we talking the wastewater system or Desert Hills?
Yeah, we've got a different.
But to hook up to sewer in Desert Hills.
Or you don't have sewer in Desert Hills. Am I missing something?
Sean, can you help me out?
Counselor, correct. We don't, our policy actually doesn't affect Desert Hills because we have no sewer. There really is, is coming down to our projections of, of new connections that were coming as. Is part of the revenue. The revenue is made up of both the user fees, the base fees, and the commercial side. We have a volumetric fee. But we also had some projections for development growth that's going to come in and get some capacity fee so that some of those projects have not hit yet. So effectively in the queue.
Thank you, Sean. I was wrong.
Can I ask a question on this? For the wastewater, does the wastewater revenue anticipate six months of increased? Income from the fees for the. Having a connection to the wastewater system?
You're talking about the new rates or the existing?
Well, if a new rate goes into effect on January first, then this fiscal year would have six months worth of that revenue. Does the two million, seven hundred twenty-one thousand dollars include that revenue?
That's an excellent question. I did not include any of the rate, rev, increased rate revenue in the fiscal year twenty-three budget. So we could be conservative.
Okay, so in this case, there should be some additional revenue that is not, not reflected here. Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. In this top chart, with the new reporting dashboard, you can see that the capital projects are broken out for wastewater. The inlet screen replacement was started in the first quarter, so twenty point six percent of the capital project budget is expensed. So with this new presentation, each quarter, you'll be able to see the capital projects in their own line outside of operations. So operations will be freestanding, revenue and expense, and the capital is also freestanding. So you can see your management team working through their capital projects, and finance will continue to report where they're at, what it's for. What budget's remaining, and that's what that part of the graph is. And then the bottom part is revenue to expense. And even though we discussed that revenue was lower than expected, the revenue is the blue and the expense is the red. And so revenues are exceeding the expenses at this point in the year. Cave Creek Water operations are starting the year out with revenues in the blue. They're four percent above budget. And expenses in the red, which are five percent below budget. Capital projects were started for the walkway at the treatment plant, and the grant funds were transferred to support the Phoenix Interconnect project. So in, in this budget, under the capital projects, you can see the five hundred thousand that was expensed. That's the beginning of the Phoenix Interconnect project going through the Cave Creek Water Fund. Under capital projects, separate from operations.
I'm sorry, I, I have all these questions. Just saying, I don't understand a lot of things and what going on in this town. Been away from it too long. Revenue, four million, seven hundred and some odd thousand dollars. Wouldn't, shouldn't the WIF of funds, anticipated WIF of funds be reflected in here one way or another as, as revenue?
We don't recognize revenue until it's earned. So until we actually receive it. And WIF works as a reimbursement, so you probably won't see it that way. You'll see an expense and, and revenue matching. As we expense things and we get with a reimbursement, so it should be equal dollar for dollar. So I'm not sure you would see any, anything in this, and we will report with a separately so you can see any reimbursement, any expenses.
Okay. An alternative accounting methodology for that.
It will be through the capital. We'll. It will be through the capital. We'll, we'll carve out Phoenix Interconnect.
I was just thinking the money is going to be held in limbo. We all know how that works.
I don't know how that works. I don't know how to do that. Okay. So let's see, we're moving to Desert Hills Water. Revenues in blue are tracking on budget at twenty five point five percent. And expenses in red are slightly ahead of budget. In Desert Hills Water, no capital projects have been started so far in fiscal year twenty twenty three. But if we remember the bottom parts of each of these slides, all the enterprise funds are operating within the current revenues. So all the blues are greater than the reds in all three of the charts. And I think at this time of the year, that's really important to start out that way, to report that way. We may be a little closer off of budget, under or over. But overall, all the revenues are supporting all the expenses in all the enterprise funds as of the end of the first quarter. Any questions about the enterprise funds? Okay, this one should be a little easier. This is your debt schedule. The debt service schedules chart shows the debt for the water enterprises funds. And in that bottom box, the very bottom, it shows a beginning debt balance at the beginning of the fiscal year of twenty nine million, one hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and eight thousand. It also shows three million, nine hundred and forty eight, four sixty four of payments are scheduled. And that would be resulting with an ending debt obligation at the end of this fiscal year of twenty five, one sixty eight, three forty four. So this is all of the debt individually by enterprise funds. Their total payments, their total beginning and ending balance for you. I'm not sure we've done this report before. And this was a request of Kerry of finance. Any questions on the debt schedule?
I've got a comment. This, I mean, this is really good news. It wasn't that long ago. We had sixty three million dollars in debt. This is absolutely amazing. We're in good financial.
I do, I actually have another question. Since there will be revenue coming in that was not accounted for with, with the, if we pass the water rates and everything, specifically for desert hills where there will be, should be an increase in revenue. That was not anticipated when we did the budget. That being the case, can we, can the town spend that money? Since it was not budgeted? Or is it sit there waiting for the succeeding year?
We cannot spend unallocated dollars. It must be allocated in a budget somewhere. Keeping in mind that if the budgeted revenues are less than what we anticipated, these would basically fill in that gap if they're needed. We only spend money if we have appropriate expenses and appropriate budgeted dollars. And what happens if we have an increase as I'm anticipating? I am hoping that the rate increase will increase the fund balances in each of the enterprise funds slightly. So that support from the general fund, that's always like so anticipated and we have to wait to see if we really need it. We should be able to not budget that way. We should be able to, the fund should be self-supporting if we can bring their fund balances up with the rate increase.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, question.
Councilman Silva.
On the bottom, that fiscal year twenty three total payments, that three million, nine forty eight, that is the principal payment and interest payment, correct?
Correct.
So when you look at the ending balance of twenty five, one, six, eight, since we're paying down the loan every quarter, the interest payment, the, the dollar amount for interest goes down. So would I be correct in assuming that in approximately, I'd say five years, our debt will be completely paid off. And that's because of the reducing the amount of interest we pay out every quarter. Is that a fair assess, assessment that, that all of this would be paid off in about five years? Five times four is twenty thousand.
Mayor, Councilmember Silva, actually, we pay our debt service twice a year. And we only pay interest in December. So we pay interest once a year. With, we pay interest, principal and interest, and then we make an interest payment in December. So.
Clarify my comment then. Would I be correct in assuming after the principal payment is made and interest payments are made, that we've got about five years remaining on, on this twenty nine million to be twenty five million dollar total payment, we'd be debt free. We'd certainly have other debt through WIF loans, new ones, but for this, they'd be paid down to zero.
You're, you're correct. The majority of the debt would be paid down the next five years or something.
Thank you.
I, I do have a chart. I can't find it quickly and I can't share it without being on the screen, but I can send that to you. It's got all of them that roll through until the end.
That's, thank you, but that's not necessary.
Okay.
Save it for the new council.
Okay, any other questions about the debt schedule? To conclude, the town has recently received two GFOA awards. For fiscal year twenty one, the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. We were awarded this, the town was awarded this, and this is the tenth consecutive year for receiving this award. Also for fiscal year twenty three, the town was awarded the distinguished budget presentation award for the third consecutive year. And this was, this is for the current year budget that we wrote and you just recently approved. So this also, this budget award was one of the goals for the finance office for this year budget and coordinates with your strategic plan. So I'd like to end on that good note.
Before you leave, I want to echo what Councilmember Silva said before. And also try to cross the point that I ask a lot of questions. Some of them are not the, the best questions in the world. Some of them I think are necessary to ask. And I have to say, I appreciate the fact that you give clear, concise answers. You know, a few years ago, I used to ask a question and get forty five minutes of answer and be able to say, did you just say yes? And, and you know, oh yes, that's what I did say. I like it when you say, how much is this going to be? And you give an answer. And then don't go off into globulating at the same time. Thank you and best of luck in your future. Enjoy your retirement. I've been retired for twenty years. It is a great situation to be in.
Thank you. It's really been my pleasure to work here. Really, the town's been lovely and I will be back. I promise.
Okay, thank you.
There is public comment on this one.
David Phelps.
No kidding, David? He says no. All right. Did we need a break on the council yet? Nope. All right, agenda number five, presentation of the quarterly emergency fire and medical services report placed on the agenda by the Director, Community Risk Reduction. You know, and I see Mr. Ford, Mr. Tobin coming up here to talk to us. Chief?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. As you can see, Chief Tobin has come to bail me out if I screw up or say the wrong thing. But he, basically, this is the quarterly first, as was mentioned, this is the first quarterly report for twenty two, twenty three. But it is the third time I've come before you now since we changed everything around the third, third quarterly report for you to take a look at. In your packets is a little more detail than the PowerPoint that we put together. But we'll quickly go through some of the highlights and we'll be here to answer any questions if you have any of those questions. The first is, this is the run information from July first through September thirtieth through the first quarter of the fiscal year. And it's broken down by month and then for the quarter. And then I've added another column that says for the year to date. Year to date is the calendar year to date. That's from January third when we started. And so you can see the percentages, the percentage is a cause on year to date is for the calendar year. You can see that we, this quarter, we ended up running one hundred and thirty eight total calls and four hundred and seventy four, the bulk of those calls. As every month is going to be EMS calls or emergency medical services calls. Broke it down into fires, special cause other, and then special ops, trail ops. Underneath, I put in the training hours because part of our contract and IGA with Daisy Mountain is that we do have to have the training calculated and controlled and tracked. And so you can see the number of hours in the different areas that we've done the training, company training, driver training, EMS training. That may has them keep their certifications up for the, the state certifications, which is required by our contract. I put up two charts for the, the PowerPoint here. Again, by first quarter incidents and by year to date incidents. And in this quarter, as you can see, the number of calls for EMS were down a little bit because we had additional trail calls and additional but the bottom, you can see how we're running year to date. The noteworthy items that we listed here, and we can talk a little bit more about these, any of these that you like. We did, as you were aware, last quarter, we started up the additional brush crew staffing for the wildland crew, the higher danger. But because of the monsoons this year, the early monsoons and the heavy monsoons we had, we ended up cutting that off a little bit short. We cut it off in July, which ended up being a credit back to us from the contract that Shirley was talking about with Daisy Mountains. And that'll be recognized in this, this next invoice that we have. We have interviewed the architects for the fire station to start putting that together for the redesign and the remodel of the fire station. We've attended state and local training. We still have had additional discussions and I think a couple of you might have gotten phone calls about the Department of Forestry and Fire Services State doing some defensible space work in the areas north of in area of Spur Cross around Spur Cross. And so we're still working with them. There will be a fire program that they come to the, the town with that we will look at to make sure that they're not going too far. With their, they want to clear and protect the preserve and clear protects especially some of the swarrold dense swarrold areas up there from the, the flash fuels and things like that. So they have their crews that are doing that. The town isn't paying for that. That's coming from the state and from their grant money. We did have a working, the one that got the most attention, the working fire in downtown at the trailer court behind the circle K. It was a fifth wheel trailer. And that was a, I put that on there because that's a classic example of how the automatic aid system works. Our engine was busy, was out of the station. The ambulance crew from this station was first there, gave the report. The first command officer actually came, I think, we from Scottsdale. And then you had the Scottsdale and the Phoenix engines first on the scene. And if you went to that incident, after that occurred, you could not tell that that trailer fire was fully working, fifth wheel trailer, you couldn't tell that that had been parked next to their primary office space. Those guys got on it so fast and it worked so quickly and they had the resources they needed to supply the water and to attack that fire appropriately. So that was a classic example of how well the automatic aid system is working for us here in town. And in September, I put this on here because it made the news. We had two fatal hiking incidents at Spur Cross Ranch. We've met with the sheriffs after that to talk about the helicopters and the radio communications, which Chief Tobin can expand on if he'd like. And working together with that. And we've also talked to the county parks and we've also had initial conversations with the Tonal Forest about improving the signage on the trails. We've also talked to our trail person, Bambi, about this also. So we will be making improvements to the, the, the signage on the trails for that. But that, as a result of that, we also were able and we were prepared to submit for a grant from the Firehouse Foundation, Firehouse Subs Foundation. And that is in right now. We're waiting to hear back, but we've asked for a four wheel drive off-road unit that actually has a stretcher on it. So instead of having to try to fly people out, where available and where our trails are good, we'll be able to go in and can give those people advanced life support without having to wait to fly them out to the medics and things like that. So that is all in, that's all in the works. We've been talking about that, but then that just made it a little more. You know, we need to do it a little quicker by doing that. So we've, we've made that, that presentation. And then as when we talk about grants, we've all, we're continually looking at different grants and Chief Tobin and his crews have provided. And you can talk about this, the, the grants for the Yossi and Seaburn, which is the homeland security grants. They were approved, which is in your packet, the letter from the federal government saying you're approved to, to apply for some of those grants to assist with our homeland security issues in this area. And with that, Chief, if you want to make a couple of comments on the radios or whatever you need to talk about.
Sure, I'll back up a little bit on the, not only was the trailer fire, the fifth, the fifth real fire that you reported on a prime example of the value of the automatic aid system. It also caused a little bit of disruption regarding some complaints from town residents regarding nine one one answering times. And we looked into the complaints that were made regarding how long it took for callers to make access to the nine one one system. And those were adequately investigated by our primary public safety answering point, which is the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office. Answers all nine one one calls, whether they're police or fire initially. And then if a resident says they have a fire or medical emergency, those get transferred to the Phoenix Regional Dispatch Center. All of that data and all that information is, is public information and is tracked. And I'm happy to tell you that after investigating those, and I reported this to Jim, I know he passed on the carriers, that the initial call that went into the nine one one dispatch center was not delayed. It was answered all within the standard nationally recognized time periods of what, how those call processing times should take. Subsequent callers, people that called after those initial callers were not answered as quickly because the system knows when people are calling from the same general area. So the first call went through and the units were responding. Second, third, fourth, fifth calls that were made were not answered as quickly because those calls were already being processed. So we just wanted you to recognize that when those incidents come up, we can adequately investigate those. And, and in this case, everything worked exactly how it should be regardless of what some of the interaction was with the nine one one system. Some people called, were placed on hold, hung up, were frustrated, called back a second time, not realizing that that incident had already been entered into the system and we were already responding. So when it comes to that, there's larger parts of the automatic aid system. And this is one of them, including our partners at MCSO that answered, or is our primary answering point. Chief Ford mentioned our communication systems with Maricopa County Sheriff's Office. And this has been a complex issue for not just the Daisy Mountain Fire District, but most fire agencies that work with Maricopa County Sheriff's Office. They've been reluctant to share their radio channels with fire service agencies. Other law enforcement agencies in the valley do share their radio channels with their fire partners, especially since the accelerated number of active shooter incidents that have occurred throughout the country. The standard practice is, is that all agencies, particularly first responders, should be able to talk to one another. Generally in the fire service, what we say is, we will go to the police department. We will go to their radio channel. We don't expect them to come to us. We just really want to listen to the incidents that are happening. You can tell a lot by listening to the radio. If a police officer is running after somebody and trying to talk on the radio, you get a pretty good situational awareness on what's going on. Or if they're talking about getting shot at, we can hear those kinds of things too. So we continue to work with the, with our partners at MCSO related to that. In particular, also with air operations and working with Fox helicopter, which serves Cave Creek Carefree and all Maricopa County, but mostly incorporated areas, including the entire Daisy Mountain. Cave Creek Carefree and all Maricopa County, but mostly incorporated areas, including the entire Daisy Mountain Fire District. The Daisy Mountain has a radio that we can talk to Fox helicopter. In our battalion chief vehicle. And their pilots are getting more and more adapted, talking to us when it comes to. Their search and rescue missions and emergency air evacuation systems. Air rescue situations. So we're getting better. It takes a little while to teach a new dog. New tricks or an old dog new tricks, but we're getting there with them and things are improving. However, our partners to the south, south of the Carefree Highway, Phoenix, Glendale, Peoria, Tempe, Chandler. They don't work with M C S O. They have. They're a helicopter based out of Phoenix that they operate with fairly regularly. And they have ongoing radio communications with what's called Firebird. We don't, Firebird does respond with Daisy Mountain, but our air. Helicopter service is provided by Maricopa County and Fox. So we've worked with Fox for years, obviously. Two and a half decades. Our partners aren't used to it. And one of the growing pains on Cave Creek coming into the automatic aid system is you have automatic aid partners that come here. And expect the same type of. Emergency activity that they would if they were in in the other cities. So we're working with our partners, we're working with M C S O. We have. Really good cooperative arrangement with them and things are getting better. So as time goes on, I I expect them to. Dramatically improve and continue to get better. So things are working well. More than happy to answer any questions you might have.
If I could just make one additional comment about that, there's been set up. Monthly meetings with the air operations folks, with Phoenix Fire, with Daisy Mountain, with Maricopa County that have. Gone through a whole bunch of these issues. And so as the chief mentioned, the operations are getting much, much better, just even recently in the last three months. And so we're going to continue to do that. Those monthly meetings are continued to be set so that we can go and have those discussions, especially hosted by. By Phoenix Fire at their training center down there. And then one other comment I want to make is I did for the in preparation for that grant. From Firehouse Foundations. I did go back and our crews responded to eleven technical rescue calls for service on our trails. Since January. And that's, that's a pretty good number, but in addition to that, which we don't track, and now I go back and and look at it. Is a lot, there's some additional calls that are just emergency medical service calls. Somebody at the trailhead. That said, I I made it back to the trailhead, can you come and, you know, check my my heart or my blood pressure have fallen? And so we have additional calls other than that eleven, we've initiated with our regional partners, eleven technical rescue calls. Since January on our trails.
So just before we move on, I did, I explained to you about the air operation, but I don't want you to fear as. Feel as if there was ever an inadequate level of service. That's not what I'm suggesting. We've worked with Fox very well. Both of the incidents that occurred here in Cave Creek had no negative outcome as a result of air operations or communications. So we just want you to know that irregardless of that, we continue to work and improve and try and get better.
Councilman Morris.
You mentioned the trail signage. Were were signs or lack thereof a direct. Cause, or are we talking about general warning? I don't want to violate any. Issues here, but if you can expand on that, please do.
Here, and these are my feelings. Okay, so. What happens is, and we've talked with the county and with the Tono about this, is what happens is we have people that. Overestimate their ability and underestimate the difficulty of the trails. And so that's, we're going to change the signage to remind them. Make sure you know what you're getting into and make sure you've talked to other people and people know you're going out. And, you know, you brought your cell phones, even though there's sporadic cell coverage in some of those areas. But the issue is. In in both of these cases, the issue is that they left the marked trails. People will go out and they will leave the marked trails. And once they leave the marked trails, if you're not that familiar with the snoring desert, it's very easy to get. Get disoriented. And I believe in my feeling is that both of those people got disoriented and left the marked trails. Because that's how our responders and tougher chief Tobin a little bit, that's how our responders are going out there. Which is why we're asking for additional resources from the grant to help with that because. You have to remember in the middle of July, when it's a hundred and twenty degrees. And somebody calls for that, we're still sending our resources out there and putting our folks at risk also. So that's why we're. Using the helicopter and using, trying to use additional resources, but a lot of times it's individual bad decisions. That are, it's overestimating their ability, whether it's climbing Black Mountain or.
So it wasn't something where we, they couldn't find the trails. It was, I mean, the trails are, all the ones I've been on are very well. You know, when you're on the trail.
That's correct, but again, this is from what my interpretation, this is, they both left the trails. Okay. And once they got off the trails, they were difficult to find. Thanks, which is resulted in the air operations for both of them.
Unfortunately, that considering the location, when people go into trails, there's no cell service.
Right.
You would say that that's probably what you want to happen, but. Even experienced, well-planned hikers don't realize that their cellphone is constantly trying to find a cell site. When they leave service that drains their cellphone batteries. Then when they find themselves lost, disoriented, out of water, their cell phones don't work. If their cell phones had worked, we can triangulate their location utilizing the technology available. Through the the cellphone systems and we can find them on the trail. We know actually almost exactly where they are. But when their cell phones fail, then it's a shot in the dark, trying to find where they were last. So most don't realize that when you go into fire in remote areas, when your cell phones don't work, you should either turn it off. Or turn on airplane mode until you need it, because when you turn it on, even if you're not in a cellphone area, we can still triangulate those signals. But your cellphone continues to try and find your cellphone provider and they drain your batteries very, very quickly and the heat too. My advice to most people is don't hike during excessive heat warning days. We can do it at that.
Councilman Silver.
Unaccustomed as I am to get into any level of detail, I have maybe a detailed question for you, Chief. For July, August, September, that quarter. You're showing that there were twenty one responses for fire. And when I go to the next page where you have a report for significant. Down a Cave Creek incidents, there's ten incidents of fire. So would I conclude that the eleven that are missing are just minor things and. Or you had to send the truck out to attend to, but they weren't any of any significance?
Mayor Bunch, Councilmember Silver, thank you for the opportunity to answer that question.
Oh, you're very welcome.
As a, as a fire chief of Daisy Mountain, what I would tell you was is my only synopsis on that would be is that we've done such a great job. That we made that small fire not turn into a big one. I say that tongue in cheek. It could be so many things, right? I wouldn't, we could tell you what they all were.
No, no.
But generally speaking, they probably were dispatched as one thing. We've resolved pretty quickly, therefore weren't major incidents. And hopefully that's why we're here to stop the little ones from being big ones.
And if I could follow up there and councilman, so that is total fire calls, not broken out by structured fires or. Car fires or example of brush fires or illegal burnings or something like that. So that's total fire incidents that were dispatched.
Yeah, because on on your incident sheet, it covers structure fires, trail.
Right. And you'll also know some of those, yeah, councilmen, so when mayor, some of those are auto aid responses, those structure fires, a lot of those. Structure fires, we were working on behalf of the auto aid system as the second or third unit in. For those, some of those structure fires, we've actually had a few during this year, fairly significant structure fires in Tatum Ranch. That we ended up being second or third in to assist the Phoenix initial Phoenix crews on. So that's why I'm breaking it out for town incidents and then breaking it out for when we've gone to help others and same with the North Castle. We had a couple.
We've been a great partner up here to to our partners and it's gone very reciprocal.
Thank you.
Councilmember Roy.
Quickly, the comment that you made about the nine one one calls. And then the people that were behind the very first call. And their frustration because, but you know, their perception was their calls weren't being answered in a timely fashion. Are you doing anything to communicate with the public about the process? So if it happens again, which I'm sure it will, people will understand that you're already on that call. That they're just not being delayed for no reason.
Mayor Bunch, Councilman, that's a really good question. And what I can tell you is is similar to to what the sheriff deputy mentioned earlier. All of our call centers, Maricopa County Sheriff's Office as our primary P S A, Phoenix Regional Fire Dispatch Center. Law enforcement to some degree fire, although not as significant these days are are all under a tremendous amount of pressure. With attrition rates, we have more people leaving than we have people coming in. Covid didn't help because we weren't able to prepare. For new hires that people were still leaving, but we couldn't bring new people in. So I would say, are we communicating that to the public? The communication is is that they're just extremely busy. They don't have enough people. Sometimes there are delays. This specific case, it was not a delay, but sometimes there are when when storms come or there's other activities that create more. Work, it's difficult to get to the calls and that is a problem. There are regular PSAs about. Only call when it's an emergency. Don't call when it's not, believe it or not, that should go without saying, but it's that that's also a good thing to say. But as far as the messaging, what the message would be. Is we're trying our best at very, very difficult times.
I was just wondering if like APS, when there's an outage and you use your text to notify them of the outage. And they have a response that we're aware of it. So at least the end user would know that you're. Going to the scene of the fire.
Yeah, very difficult in a situation where it takes a human being to talk to another human being about what they're calling for, because it could be other things. You know, there could have been a simultaneous incident for some other reason at the same time. That would have been delayed or someone that was calling might have had that delay. And that's strictly a amount of activity for the number of human beings that they have. To answer and and move those calls where they need to go.
Yeah, just a thought, because I know, you know, unhappy customers, and especially with nine one one, because. You know, the impression is that it's going to be instantaneous.
Yeah, very, very high stress circumstances.
If I could make a quick follow up to that, Mayor and Councilman. We did, and and correct me if I'm wrong, whenever there's something like this happens, anybody that did reach out either to you or the town. I try to call back directly and explain what happened when that occurred. In this particular instance, being it was right behind the circle K in downtown. And I have the number, I don't have it off the top of my head, the number of nine one one calls that was received by the sheriff in that first ten minutes. Was an extraordinary amount, you know, and so that's what was happening because right in the middle of downtown, you had. Hundreds of people that saw that and they all made that phone call. So that's what happened. And if I didn't get to anybody that had contacted you, please let me know, because that's one of the things with Carrie that I do try to reach out and let them know what.
Well, that's good. So there was some follow up.
Yep.
Yeah.
So the answers don't be Sam Campana.
Don't ask for directions through nine one one. Am I supposed to know that? I'm sorry.
Former Scottsdale mayor who used nine one one to ask directions for places. There is a public comment on this.
No one wishes to speak.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief.
Senator Number Six.
On Saturday, we're the Daisy Mountain Firefighters Charity's is down at the Buffalo Chip with their annual cornhole tournament. So come on out.
Senator Number Six, which is council discussion approval of a cooperative purchasing agreement with Core and Maine L P for the purchase of Neptune Water Meters. And associated equipment, parts and software for an amount up to seven hundred thousand dollars. Hello, Sean.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Give me a second. A lot of things discussed with you guys today. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, yeah, the action I am today is in regards to the towns. Trying to get a contract put in place so the town can start working on our our heat replacement program. This is what worked for me. So right now, we put it in the capital improvement program and got funded last year was a change out for the the Cave Creek meters. It's in the capital improvement program. We actually have it funded for, we'll have identified in the five year C I P for four years worth of funding. This being the first year, the funding at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. We thought we need about six hundred thousand dollars to complete the work. So at this point, the goal was to go in and replace the the meters that are going to remain in the Cave Creek system. Which will be about twenty five, just under twenty six hundred accounts by time care free does its disconnect and takes off its five hundred and fifty accounts. And that most of those meters are actually existing to when the town bought the system or just had been added to not in the last two, not too many years. The town did start changing out on our own behalf to a Neptune meter system. So I take a step back that the the town's metering system is. When we bought the system in two thousand and seven was a combination, had about seven different meter types in system, but the. Previous water operators actually had put a radio read system onto it called Itron. So they added that to the system. Most of those devices are actually getting close to the end of their life. Actually, I'm jumping ahead here. Sorry. Yeah, I'll jump in one slide. Actually, I'll let you know. So most of the transmitters that were installed are actually the ones that we bought when purchasing the system. So there's a seventeen year old meters and transmitters. The transmitter is actually only warranted for ten years. It doesn't mean that they're going to last for ten years. They're actually a little radio device. It's attached to the meter and that sends out a signal. So we do a dry, what's called a dry by radio system. And when the town bought Desert Hills, it was actually a walk by system. We're actually, we had to have staff physically go out and read the meters. In two thousand and twelve, the town actually started to change that system out to a Neptune based system. Sorry, I'm jumping around here a little bit. And this is an example of a Neptune meter. So two thousand and twelve, they started that work and it was complete just as I was coming on board in two thousand and nineteen. So we have about nineteen hundred of these Neptune meters out in desert hills. They've been working very well for us and we actually have a couple of good advantages, not only in fact that they're they're putting out good signals, but there's things like data. Works that we can get out of the system between the meters themselves and the software. And staff pick up the the usage data on the monthly from the from the customers. There can also get alarms from the system when there's high or low water usage. So in advance of us sending out a water bill. Our staff actually get some notifications from the system and that's usually what we get to or what we do. We don't have to do re reads out in desert hills. We actually get notification of anomalies in the system and we can go out and start customer interaction and start talking to people earlier. Than them waiting the other two weeks before they get their bill. So it's been very useful. We actually got a lot of good feedback from our customers on that. So the Cave Creek meters, again, they're 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 a different category. They're they're not a Neptune body. We started changing out to Neptune bodies a few years ago and we're doing it ad hoc as the meters have been failing. So we have both the meter devices themselves that measure and then the the radio repeater that attaches to it, which is an Itron based system. So again, most of the devices, the Itron radios, they're a battery powered device. And again, a large majority of them are seventeen years old. So they're starting to fail. We're currently seeing a failure rate of about ten to twenty of those radios per month. So that's catching up with us. So staffer, what we're doing is we're actually in the last few years, what we've been doing is waiting till we get a group together. Buy some meters and then we actually go out and replace them in kind are in in the process. That was sort of a soft start to the meter replacement program. And it's been effective for us, but again, they're they're failing at a rate that it's hard for us to keep up with. Taking another step back on why we do this, the meters actually both meter the the customer usage, which allows us to do billings and generate the revenues for the system. But they also take some time for staff. The, when the metering system in Desert Hills was changed out. That got us down to one day of reading all those nineteen hundred meters. Part of that's the layout of Desert Hills is is. Even though it's got a lot of dead entries on dirt. Even though it's got a lot of dead entries on dirt, their roads, it is more of a grid based system out in desert hills. So it's easy for the staff to get around it. Cave Creek typically takes two days for one staff member to drive through and pick up the readers. Right now, we actually, they're driving around with two different radio devices, an Itron and an Neptune device in the car. So it looks a little bit of a mess in their side, sidecar. When they're going up. But after they finish that reads, we're typically getting eighty to a hundred reread requests out of the system. And that means that the, the radio. Did not send out a signal properly, or there was an issue between the radio connecting to the meter, i.e. the meter body died. So it's been running consistently for a while. That's of the five member crew that we have in a distribution crew that they usually take two to three days. After the one person is read to actually go out and do all the re reads that's manually going to the meters, actually picking up the information and put in our billing system. So there's a lot of staff time involved currently in running the cave creek metering system as it sits. Sure, I'm jumping around a little bit. Another advantage I wanted to bring up with the Neptune meters that. When we talk later tonight, we're going to be talking about the drought management program. One of the things with the drought management is we're really trying to look to promote conservation. And we think one of the best advantages or best ways that we can help our customers learn about conservation is, is give them more accurate information. About their, their water usage. Currently, someone, they, they use water within a month period. We read the meters and we get a bill out in two weeks. So if they've had a water leak or some large event, it could be six weeks before they see that. The Neptune meters are actually, are set up to actually be tied to what's called an AMI system. So while we have a drive by system right now, we pick up the information and AMI means that we've got a fixed radio system that actually picks up the meters. And actually you can then send it to a cloud based software package that we can actually look at ourselves as well as the customers. They can see their usage from more real time data sets. So we do believe that moving forward, the great technology for us to have and it'll actually allow us to. Help our customers be more efficient and actually look for issues like leaks. So one of the reasons besides failures, we, we have been looking at the meters last year in doing the capital improvement program presenting it to council. We tested a hundred and six meters in the Cave Creek system. We had them taken out. And we actually, our standard for the town is that is the meters plus or minus three percent, it's considered inaccurate. Of the hundred and six meters that we tested last year in the Cave Creek of the, the non Neptune meters. We found that thirty percent of that, that database was actually under reporting and the under reporting was five to eighteen percent. When we try to calculate that of, you know, what kind of savings is involved in that is there's so many variables. Because how much water that person would be using that month is a variable and we don't know. And our, our volumetric costs, even though they are going up, the volume of the water isn't that much in some cases. So what low water uses with eighteen percent, we might not lose that much money, but we are actually losing accounting of the system. And we are not within the parameters that the town has prescribed in town code. It's actually in town code where that three percent accuracy comes in. The, the other issue we have with the Itron system is that there's different variations of the Itron. Radios we have in the system, they call them by series. We have forty, fifty, sixty and one hundred series. Their newest series of the five hundred, our system is not compatible, compatible with that. But of the four that we have, the one hundred is the newest, but we still have probably about half the system is the forty fifties and sixties. And those make up the bulk of the ones that are, you know, ten plus years old and getting up to seventeen years old. So that's an issue for us. And the Itron system doesn't allow us to do some of the things like the high wire use data recording that we get or notification that we get out of the, of the Neptune system. Because it's, it's actually tied to a different meter. It's not tied to, it's not a Neptune radio tied to a Neptune meter. So they're more compatible that way. So it's another advantage of moving away from the Itron system and getting to a unified system with the Neptunes. And Neptune, I think has worked very well for the town. And I, I believe that's the best opportunity for us to do for. The meters themselves, what we're looking to do is a cooperative purchase agreement off of a Goodyear contract. Goodyear is also a Neptune metered system. The one inch meter bodies themselves, there has been cost increases, the way these contracts are structured. And we thought that Goodyear was the best one for us to piggyback on right now was that they do allow for the, the, every year for the vendor to come back and, and ask for a price increase. In this case, the one inch meters have gone up to three hundred and twenty eight dollars per unit. Partly because of the technology, the chips have gone up and actually the cost of the brass and meters themselves have gone up. So we're factoring that in. So when we come forward with the new capital improvement program, we'll look for that if we, to change out the rest of the meters. The cost will be a little bit more six hundred thousand dollars in the system. But again, tonight's action is really the, the, starting of the contract and getting the contract in place. And we thought that we'd ask for the authority to allow us to do what we thought was the bulk of the program at the time, but we may have to come back and amend that. And as far as installation, what we've been doing, and we don't need a separate contract for this, is we've been using an outside agency called Metering Services. They're based out of Tempe. And that's all they do is meter testing and meter installation. So it's worked out very effectively. So as we come up with a list of meters to be changed out right now. Our staff will go out. Make sure we can find the box, clean the box out for the metering services can then to come do the change and gives, is the information. So it's proved very effective. It also frees up our staff time because it is staff intensive to actually go out and do all the, the legwork. I was going out to the meter boxes is, is more quickly, we could do it more efficiently and get it to a point where the contractor, they can come in and do the work. And they charges right now at twenty five dollars per meter to test if we want to get a test report out of it or seventy five dollars to actually change it out. So that's part of the cost of the program. But at this point, we don't, we can, I think within the, we can do that within the confines of the town manager's authority to do this program. So we're trying to start up the current fiscal year and the start of the meter replacement program. We have not done it before. We have been more reactive, I've mentioned three hundred plus meters in the Cave Creek system or have been changed out to Neptune meters. We've done that over the last three years since I've been here, just as meters have been failing. The, the, we would get together with staff as the reread list got large, we'd identify a way to fund that and get it done within the operational budgets. Now we have a capital program available. So we're trying to kick off this capital project for, for council. We're trying to go to a proactive approach to changing our meters. We also want to look towards doing more metering testing. That's also the, of the existing Cave Creek meters. We want to go and help us focus on where we want to be changing meters out. We still have, you know, over two thousand meters to change out in the system. So where's the best place? We can go by the age of the radios or we can actually start looking at meters by meter body ages and stuff like that. And identifying where we can best focus our efforts. As well as we want to go back to and test the Neptune system that's actually existing in cave and desert hills. It is starting to get close to ten years old in some cases. So it's good for us to be proactive and actually do annual testing on that to make sure that the meters are reading correctly and then factoring that in and, and. Looking at how to develop the program if we need to accelerate it and bring that forward to council. And that information to council. So the action we've put on for recommendation for council was to do a cooperative purchase agreement. My initial thought was we'd come in at this, at least at this time and ask for the, the ability to utilize this contract. It's actually for a four year period. It's not seven hundred thousand dollars in one year. It's six hundred thousand dollars of the capital program and a hundred thousand dollars over the next four years, which I would expect to be new meter installations. Because we currently buy those meters, then we install them, we charge the customer for it, but we actually have to pay for that out of our operational budget and it comes as a revenue offset. So that's why the extra hundred thousand dollars. But if council wants, we could, we could, you could reduce that and just give me one year where the authorities start the program. And then when I come back to ask for next year's authority, I can give you an update on where we are with the program. I also will do that with the capital program also. So leave that at the council's discretion if you want to allow us all this. I do point out that, or do want to point out, the town did make a grant application to the Water Smart Program of the EPA. For additional five hundred thousand dollars and that was to allow us to do the full conversion to an AMI metering system. So that would give us one point one million dollars to work with. We have not received a notification if, if we receive those grants. We hope we do. If we don't, then I will probably suggest in the capital program that we look to try and fund that conversion ourselves. Because again, I, I do believe moving forward that converting to an AMI system, which gives people more real time. Water usage data is the best opportunity for the town to work with our customers to conserve water moving forward. Giving a lot of information and see what questions you may have for me.
Councilmember. So I was going to ask about the grant application because I was aware of it. And so they're recommending if we would get that grant, an AMI system.
Mayor Councilmember, we actually put in for an AMI system as part of the grant.
So then, would that conflict with the Neptune systems that you're advocating that we buy now?
No, the Neptune meters are actually combat compatible. The, the, the Neptune, the new Neptune meters. Have a, a one watt radio in them. So they're compatible with fixed radio receiver units and they're, they're used so they can do that. And Neptune also has a cellular option of a radio and that's our talking discussions with Neptune. They recommended we'd go with a hybrid system. So we'd have a few fixed base stations picking up some meters. And then the ones we have outlined here is we add a cellular radio tube.
Okay, as long as we know that if we were lucky enough to get that grant, what we currently have would be compatible.
Yeah, it's completely compatible. And then if we don't get the grant, my suggestion is, and recommendation is that we, we move forward with the town, try to do that conversion and try to find the funding to do that conversion.
Very good. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Smith, I see your finger on the button.
Yeah. Now, the seven hundred thousand dollars does that include the seventy five dollar replacement cost, does it?
Right now, I do not believe we have a replacement cost fee in our schedule. We have a new, new, when we do new meter install, we actually have a fee for that. And that's part of. Well, we've been more focused on the, the rating capacity study. We're actually also looking at our fees. So currently we charge it, I think it's two hundred and fifty dollars for a meter for installation regardless of size. And that's actually something we want to correct. It's in town codes. We actually have to do that for our fee study and change town code for that. But I don't recall that we have another fee that we charge.
Now you would. In, in whatever I had to review here, it says that seventy five dollars for installation.
Oh, sorry. I was thinking as if you, you know, that's actually, yeah, that's, that's the fee that we're charging to the contractor to help us do the installation work. So instead of our staff going out and doing the work to change out the meter body and install the new one, we have a contractor do that work that, that. Has proven effective. They're very efficient at doing that and they can get it a lot more done more efficiently than our staff can and allows our staff to do other work.
So that wouldn't, wouldn't be the same contractor that the equipment would be bought from.
No, no.
So it'd be another couple of hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, not quite that much, but yeah, it's, it's getting up there. But then what we propose to do that is because we do batches of meters, we'd have them come out and then I'd work with the town, within the town's manager authorities. How we've been doing it. And the last meter changer they did for us, they did a hundred meters for just over five thousand dollars, I think it was, the fee. So I think we, we don't need to have council authority to do that. I think we can work within the, the other parameters of the town to get that work done.
All right. So with the five, say a five percent Satan. Is gonna with the numbers you utilized, it was five to something, but then it was thirty percent had an issue. Of the meters that had been tested. So I said five percent. Working everything out, it came out to be something like a, a ten year payback. For the seven hundred thousand plus the two hundred plus thousand dollars for installation. Which would be what? Half, half the service life of the meter.
Typically the meters and it's, you have the meter body service life and then you have the radio antenna life. But it's, it's effective to actually change about at the same time, if you're doing them both and it's about ten years. This is a, is a good rule of thumb. Again, we've, we've, ours are pushed a little bit longer. You would want to look at usage, but yeah, ten years is a, is a return on investment. So if we can get ten years worth of revenue, then we'll be back looking at this again.
Is that kind of a, a normal cost benefit ratio?
I think for our industry, yeah, you know, if we're, if we can recapture the cost of that device, knowing that moving forward. And then obviously we, I got a little confused earlier of their conversation. But yeah, we obviously want the cut, the cut new customers to pay for the meter outright, which currently we're, we're not getting that because we haven't captured that fee. But.
There's also other money that wasn't really accounted for and that's all of the tending that takes place now. Because there's so many of the meters that are either failing or not operating properly. So, you know, my ten year payback is probably incorrect. It's probably lower than that. Because if once the meters are replaced, one can assume that they need to tend them. Will not be as significant as it is at the present time.
Right. And that's, that's one of the reasons I'm really pushing for the program to move forward with is that. Yeah, the amount of staff time that we're spending in the, the Cave Creek system on the meter component is, is taking up. An excessive amount of staff time in my mind is keeping the staff away from doing other things. The last few years, the staff have been really working towards. Doing things like proactively and, and quickly getting to leaks. Service line leaks, mainline leaks, et cetera, that in the past, they never had the ability to do that. So we've moved towards that direction. But when we have to take, effectively stop everything, one week out of the year or out, one week out of the month, read meters. That, that means we only have three weeks to do everything else that we have to do.
I kind of look at staff as almost a scarce resource. You've only got just so many. And if they have to spend a lot of time doing. Maintenance. This and that with meters that are not working properly, then anytime, anytime you can redirect them. To more productive activities is a good thing. So. By ten year thing, I cut it to seven years, then probably cut it down to about a five year payback in reality. Considering the savings and staff time. Which I think is not a bad, not a bad deal. No, that's not a question. That's just a statement. Thank you.
Councilman Monacino.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sean, any guess as to increased revenues?
I'd really hesitate just to say a guess, just because there's a lot of variables involved. Again, we did, we did the, the sample of the hundred and six meters. There was four meters that we had a little bit of a trouble, problem with. So we pulled them out. I don't think that's a true statistical analysis of the system. But as we're seeing with the radios failing at the rate they are and the, the meters that we have pulled out. When we start getting back to doing more representative testing, I've been cautious of the testing is because it costs money to do the testing. I'd actually wanted to spend it on new meters rather than testing. I do expect to see some revenue, but honestly, I, I also expect that if we can get to an AMI type of radio system, metering system. To get more real time data to customers, I think our revenues will drop because we'll see a drop in consumption too. So we have to be cautious of that. But you know, that's, that's the, the bait of our existence in utilities is, you know, we, we, we try to conserve as much as we can. But then we still have to pay for the operations, but you know, the balance, the balance is itself out.
Thank you. Councilman Silva.
Sean, your seven hundred thousand dollars, you had said. It was broken down six hundred thousand towards the meter and then the extra hundred thousand. That hundred thousand, could that be spread over four years also? Or is that needed upfront, all of it in the first year?
Yeah. So what I'm asking for is the council authority to make the, to have the expenditure authority with Core Maine for up to seven hundred thousand dollars over four years. The meter replacement program is six hundred thousand of that. The extra hundred thousand was actually for us to make purchases with Core Maine for new meters, to add inventory to stock to the system. So we have been typically running around twenty to thirty thousand dollars with the new meters being purchased for the systems. This gives us the ability to work with this contractor and gives us that little extra buffer. That's with that extra hundred thousand. So that's not the hundred thousand for doing installation. It's just an additional capacity for us to work with Core Maine contractually. So their contract is funded two ways, one via the capital program, which is our replacement. And then during the operational funds, because we, we have to pay for the new meters. We install them for customers and then we get reimbursed through revenue from the customers. That's how it works. But I have to actually pay for the meters to have in stock to put into the box.
I think you had also mentioned that if we were to say. And approve a hundred and seventy five thousand per year. Or just for one year and you come back for three subsequent years, based on what price of copper is done, inflation, labor, et cetera. That would be a hundred and fifty thousand plus twenty five thousand. Would you be amenable to that? A one seventy five for one year? And then coming back and adjusting those numbers, I'm assuming they'd be higher for the three subsequent years.
Yeah, I think that's, and I probably should have put that in the council report that is as an option. Yeah, I think that would still allow us the capacity we need to work with Core Maine right now. And to kick off with the funding that we have right now and to start the program. Really, the goal is to start the program. So if we don't do the four years, then I'll just, I'll come back annually and give you counsel and update, both being the capital program. And, and when I come back to ask for the authority for the expenditure for that year, that's fine.
Do, I don't, I can't remember what you said. Do you have the authority and the budget to do this full seven hundred thousand dollars? Do you? I don't know. I can't remember what you said. Do you have the authority and the budget to do this full $700,000 now?
Well, because it's it's in the capital improvement program. So you council only funds the first year of the program. So we have $600,000 identified over four years and only the first year is funded at $150,000. The rest of the funding comes out through our operational budget through supplies. That's how we buy the the new meters for new installations. So.
So if we did the 150, which is times four years, it would fit in with the CIP.
Yes, that's 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 how we came up with the funding, the request for 700.
That might be easier, I think, and better for you if things go up quite a bit. Because you'd have you'd have to come back every year. On a yearly basis, instead of a lump sum.
Yeah, it's from an administrative standpoint, asking council to do it once. And then we just manage it as staff for the next four years. And then we'd only be coming back if we need more appropriation authority, i.e. the the cost of the meters have gone up. Or if if we want to fund a if we get the grant funds, that's so it's actually come back and pay for the additional cost of adding the AMI component to the system. So I'll be I'll be coming back to council, I anticipate. So again, we can either do the one year option. I initially, I don't know if I got too greedy and said, just give me give me four years, I'll have been assured and I'll come back when I need more authority.
Which is what I prefer.
The meter loss on the older meters you were talking about it, I think the high number was 18% if I remember the slide. Assuming someone uses 100 gallons of water, they're getting 82 gallons or something like that is going to be paid for.
Yeah.
So you got 18. So so basically, that that those errors in the underreporting are actually some of the water losses that we don't know where they are to begin with. So it looked like this whole program would help us get a handle on on actual losses of of water that we're bringing up in the canal that just disappears as it stands now. Is that accurate?
Yes, that is true. This is we we have to account for the water that we bring up. We deliver and then treat and then deliver to our customers. So the metering accuracy is a component of that. So that that goes into our annual reporting with Arizona Department of Water Resources. So, yeah, and again, when meters fail, they fail and they underreport. So effectively, they always fail on the customer side in the equation.
Okay. I think.
Call for the question.
Councilmember Ray.
I was just gonna make the motion.
Oh, we can't yet because David wants to talk about it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did he have one? He didn't have one. Never mind, David. It's getting late. I'm getting sleepy.
Right.
Bob, did you have any questions or comments or?
I I I think when this program needs to be systematic, you and I talked about this. There's no reason that the maintenance time, the personnel time, the amount of of revenue we lose because we're under measuring it. Those things are all numbers. They're economic numbers. These things are always done off economics. And $150,000 is a budget number pulled out of the air. We need a real number based on real economics. And so I firmly believe that this ought to be a pilot amount of money to get us off of the precipice with these failures. And to get enough information to make an economic decision, what is truly an economic situation. So I'm in favor of a funding the 150 and then coming back next time. And with a program that is measured, if it's not measured, it's not managed. That's the that's my mantra.
I've never heard you say that before.
So I, you know, all we have now is a bunch of subjective stuff. You know, a lot of people, we have some time, we have weeks and we need numbers, economic numbers, firm numbers, payouts. And I think this first tranche ought to be to to put that into effect. It maybe we're too light. Maybe we'll do it all. I mean, if there's enough money there, we find the money and do everything.
What what you know how your toe dipping your toe in the water came out.
Yeah.
Got a question.
I my only my only comment is that I, you know, I'm glad that Sean is willing to be flexible with us. But, you know, time is money.
Yes.
And for him to have to write a report and present it to us once a year on a program that he has justified seems to me to be a waste of his time and ours. So I trust him. I trust his administrative abilities. And I think that we should move ahead with the entire amount because he's not going to spend it all at once. It's just at his authority and he has the authority if we give it to him.
Vice Mayor, you got a question?
Yeah, I got a question that may actually relate to that. If we decide to modify this and reduce the the agreement of on our on our part, is it going to have any impact on the actual cost of the items that you would buy? Or is this something that's going to continue at that price for eternity?
No, as I mentioned, we're doing a cooperative purchase on an existing contract that the city of Goodyear has negotiated. They went through a procurement process because Goodyear has a Neptune metering base system. They want to and had they want to have a long term project in place. So that's a unit price is what what's in the contract. It's a price per meter type per meter body. It's a we use a Neptune T10 meter with an R900 radio antenna on top of it. That's in the in the value of the contract. And every year, the contract allows them to vendor to come back and come back with a new price scheme as long as it's justifiable. And if Goodyear agrees to it, then that's what we're agreeing to. So the prices I showed you for the $328 is the current price for this fiscal year. They follow the same fiscal year with us for City of Goodyear. It may go up next year. There are variables. Again, the cost of brass went up and the the cost of the actual chips in the boards went up.
Okay, so it's not something like if you buy this big package, it'll be a reduced price because you're buying a big package.
Yeah, I'm actually going to run the numbers again. And I do believe $600,000 won't be adequate based on the new pricing because that was last year's pricing. When the the price per meter was $270 for one inch meter was last year's pricing, so it has gone up.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilman Monacino.
Ma'am, Councilman Morris, you want to make a friendly amendment to the motion? Well, I don't think there needs. I mean, I think all we need to do is come back in one year. You're gonna you have you have authority to spend $150,000 and come back in one year with the results of that 150 and then we decide what to do.
Okay.
Just the 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 motion would would proceed as it stands here with the agreement of staff that they'll come back and do that.
So you're giving him the authority for the 700,000, but you just want to report once a year? Is that what you're saying? Because you're not going to revise the motion?
Well, yes, he all the only he has authority for is $150,000 this next year.
Not not according to this.
No, we have a contract, but he doesn't have authority to spend it. He doesn't have the authority to spend it. That would come back during the the budget discussions.
Yeah, yeah, the authority and versus the actual funds, the funds come through the budgeting and capital process. So right now I have $150,000 to spend this fiscal year. Council is authorized or given tasks us with spending that money. So this is the contract that allow me to spend it. I can't spend the 700 right now because I don't have that in the budget. We got the grant funds, we'd actually could spend it all this year because we'd have half million dollars grant funds.
To me, this is a natural budgeting exercise next year.
Okay.
That would be our attorney. There should be a motion to modify and then vote upon the result of that motion.
Okay, so let's do that. Somebody make a motion to modify.
Well, I mean, I I guess there are a point of order. He has authority to spend $150,000. He doesn't doesn't have a contract. Now we're going to have the contract by which he can spend $150,000. That's for this year. The other money has to be re has to be approved in next year's budget, the one fall mat, the one fall mat. So are there at least three other financial approvals between us and the end of the $700,000? I I don't, I think this motion stands as it is and we just handle this as budget time.
Going to be your budget, not mine.
I'll take that Bitcoin back.
I'll make a motion.
All right.
Council discussion and approval of a cooperative purchasing agreement with Core and Main LP for the purchase of Neptune water meters and associated equipment, parts and software for an amount up to $700,000.
Second.
And she just read the.
Didn't she leave something else?
Oh.
Down below.
Oh, I'm sorry. Why do I do that? All right. Motion to approve a cooperative purchasing agreement with Core and Main LP for the purchase of Neptune water meters and associated equipment. Am I reading the right thing?
Yes.
Okay, parts and software for an amount up to $700,000.
Now, second.
Comment. Comments, anyone?
Yeah. I don't know. It seems to me that's approval. Spend 700,000.
But it has to be in the budget and it's not in the budget. Only 150 is in.
That is the authority to spend is in the budget, not in this contract.
So all subsequent councils would take it up every year at budget time to put in 150. Or next year, they could put in.
Takes whatever they've gone up.
Yeah, exactly. Or for two years if you get a grant. So it'll show our intent, which is a very important thing to the new council.
Yes.
It it is financial.
This is money.
Yeah. Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember Monacino.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Councilmember Ray.
Yes.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Bunch.
Were we voting on? Oh, yes. I need about a three to four minute break. I've drunk most of my bottled water.
Let's make it five minutes.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate that. I didn't bring mine. Thank you.
Just like stop.
Next agen- next agenda item. Let's keep moving. Yes, keep moving.
Can we skip on the next?
No.
Okay, here he is. We just want you to feel important.
And I've already said that this is the quarterly utilities report, so you can go right ahead and start, Mr. Sean.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So in interest of time, because I know we have a long agenda, I've got a lot of charts in the report. I'll go through that quickly. Just pointing out maybe some some things that might jump out and really get more of the meat, which is in my mind, the the projects. But let me stop me at any time if you want some more information. So we start off by talking about our looking at our graph of our breakdown of our CAP water supplies and where that's going to. And that's the customers, the orange far being the Cave Creek Carefree customers. Desert Hills is the red and then the deliveries to Ranch Manana are on top of that. So this is showing the same trend that we've seen for a while. So it's the typical, we're starting to drop down in September. Usage drops as weather drops down. This one, we're trying to look at more the revenue side of things. We're trying to look at the gap between what goes into the system. And we call it non-revenue water and what we actually build for. So this is actually one of the things that we could close up that gap with. We believe with a better metering in the main system. We've been showing this for over a year now, so that the trend has been about the same. There's a gap in the system. In this case, we've got the orange is showing the Cave Creek Carefree deliveries, the Desert Hills tie in. That's the water that we delivered to Carefree and then the treated water that's actually comes out of the plant. So it's just showing. And then, uh, the treated water that's actually, uh, um, comes out of the plant. So it's just showing a difference between the non-revenue versus, uh, the billings at the treatment plant by source. This one caught my eye in, uh, in, in July, and I was trying to remember what actually happened when we had this little spike up. You can see that in this case, the green bar is actually trending closer than we attribute that to the metering out in Desert Hills being better. Uh, being met Desert Hills actually just has the three wells that, uh, go into the system. And then we have the interconnect site with, um, uh, Cave Creek. So we just actually have to, uh, combine those four meters for our production totals. And then we actually then use the Neptune metering data to get to, uh, a customer billing data set. But I looked into it and I couldn't really figure out why we had that sort of gap, uh, up here in July. Um, so I can't answer that question, but typically this one does trend better than the Cave Creek. Um, and we attribute that back to the metering. And Cave Creek, we actually attribute part of that, uh, losses going back to, uh, we know we have an issue with the CAP booster station number one meter that we have to try and address and get, get a better meter put in that side. You see this graphic every quarter is gives you an idea of just the flows coming into the plant itself. Um, we have the yellow line coming onto the page at the bottom is, is the 16 inch pipeline, our, our cap water pipeline. It enters the treatment plant at two points, uh, the south end of the plant. It goes into the Paul trailers, uh, and then through the midpoint, it actually enters into the old West Tech filter assembly, uh, room. And then we have a couple of different sub-meters that we meter that at, and that's actually gives us what we consider the, uh, calculated value of the water that, uh, we're, um, uh, bringing into the plant versus what we're pushing back out to the system because there is one meter that, uh, there's actually two meters that, um, read the flows, uh, they actually read the same value because it's, uh, we call one the near meter and the other the clear well meter. And they actually read the same value because it's just, it's the only spot they can go through. Um, and this just shows a trend of, of, um, where we've seen it, an issue for a while, which goes back to the meter at the canal is an older type of insertion type meter in the meter. Um, and that's, uh, we, we, uh, meter that, but then if you actually total up the other meters, there's always going to be an accuracy as you, as you total, uh, grouping of meters. Um, but we think that there's a bit of a problem with that meter that we need, need to address. We have money in this year's capital program. We're trying to figure out how to get in there because it's to put the meter in at the cap booster pump station means we have to take the pipeline out of service because we actually have to cut in a mag meter. That's actually the preferred standard and removes the, uh, insertion meter. And I'm, I'm working with contractors to see if we can do it this year. If we have to wait till after the Phoenix interconnects done and we can actually, um, do the work and take the pipeline down out of service. Um, because it may be down for over a day worth of work, trying to cram that work into one day might be too difficult, but it's something we need to look forward to. We need to get done. It's just when we can do it safely for the town. Um, this is one we've been looking at a lot is our distribution by losses. So the red bars is our flushing program. And we have to flush the system just because the nature of the Cave Creek system, it's got, it's a long, uh, dead end lines in a lot of cases, and to keep good water quality, we have to flush those lines out because our customers and, uh, the customer connections are, are far between a lot of areas. We don't get a lot of consumption on, on a lot of the, the lines, especially we have a 12 inch line that runs up spur across road. That has, uh, while there's some customers in that area, it's actually our pressure zone seven, the upper end of pressure zone seven, there's, uh, compared to the volume of water in that 12 inch line, it's not much. We continuously have to flush that one out. So you can see the bar and there is usually a drop, uh, when we get close to the quarterly reports, when we actually want to do our quarterly compliance sampling. What I want to bring your attention to is the orange at the bottom, and that's actually the, uh, water leaks. And when I first saw this graph, I questioned the staff and then we went through the data set and it has, you can see it's very low at the bottom because, uh, that shows how proactive the staff have been on getting top of leaks. In the past, it was sometimes very difficult. The staff didn't have the tools and we had, you know, the staff resources to get onto, uh, things like service line leaks were things that were actually adding up to considerable amounts of water losses in the system. The staff weren't able to get to them and they would linger for a while, uh, with the tools that we have now. Staff are getting to that. I wanted to forewarn staff though, our council, that, um, that number will jump, um, next quarter. Last week, we had two major breaks. Uh, typically we see two seasonal changes and the, the ground shifts as the temperature changes seems to be an issue for our pipelines because of the poor bedding. So, uh, next, uh, quarter, you will see the, um, you know, that orange bar will get very big, uh, to account for these two leaks. We had the six inch line in Cave Creek Road, which you're seeing on the, uh, left-hand side. Uh, in that case, uh, because of the way the, the pipe work is in the, the main town core, it was hard for the staff to even isolate the line, let alone, uh, we actually had to, we had, we're lucky to have a hydro excavator, uh, working on the wastewater side that we actually had finished up, was able to clean itself out and, and help us out right away and get on top of that. But it was a challenge for the staff because we couldn't get a good shutdown in town core and we had to work around existing utilities and, but the staff stuck with it, um, and got it done. The other leak you're seeing on the, um, the, uh, right-hand side, you're seeing sort of the swimming pool that we dug on the south side of Cave Creek Wash, uh, by Cloud Road Alignment. Uh, we have a six inch line that runs across there. It feeds, um, uh, approximately, I think 13 customers on the north side of the wash on Arroyo Estee Road, uh, the loop up there. And that broke. It's quite a run. We could actually see it directly on our near booster station site ramped up. You could see the leak occurring. So we actually have a good, uh, counting of the water usage because we can actually calculate when it occurred. In that case, there was a valve just out of the pitcher there. We were able to isolate it and, and, and stop that leak very quickly, but it took us a day and working with our partner with, uh, Larson Excavation, who was able, that's their piece of equipment to dig this up. You can see that, that trench, that opening, that pool is about 12 feet deep, about 15 feet wide and about 25, 30 feet long. So, yes.
I, I have a, a question relating to the, uh, white line. In the past, I know there've been occasions when fairly low pressure lines were installed in high pressure areas, you know, the 130, 140 pounds per square inch areas. And they had a tendency to break. Is that what we're dealing with here? Or is this just, uh, an anomaly of, uh, some sort, uh, due to, uh, ground subsidence or something like that?
This is a combination of a couple of things. You, you are seeing the, the white line in the large excavation on Cave Creek Wash is the older, this week we refer to as thin wall PVC pipe. Um, it actually is, uh, it's pressure rated, uh, typically to 160, 180 pounds of pressure, but unlike the newer where it's a, a class rated where they actually tested the four times the working pressure. 160 is actually the operating upside limit on that pipe. Uh, the white pipe versus the blue, the blue is called C900 pipe. Uh, the C900 is about twice the thickness, the wall thickness for that six inch piece of pipe. And what you're seeing there, it might be hard in that photo, there's a bit of a kink to the line. What actually we believe happened and what we found was that the lines had decided as it goes towards the embankment and it dives down. The bedding material, there was actually, that we had to use the excavator because some of the boulders were actually the size of the bu- the bucket. They just dug this out and they put everything back on the hole. The pipe was constrained and as it, there were settlement happening, it actually bent and actually the, the, that linear crack was eight, about 16 feet long on that pipe. It started at the bell right at the top at the end and just went its way down the pipe 16 feet. So we had to poke the entire section out and you can see that the, um, the misalignment of the joints actually shows you how far that pipe was actually being bowed over top, the, the, uh, immovable bedding. And just cracked. It finally gave way. So we, we run into a lot of the issues is, is really, um, I attribute a lot of it, the, the, the pipe would be, would survive a lot better if it had been bedded properly. But we don't have the luxury of having good bedding. They, uh, the pipe was largely installed with native backfill, uh, which is just not good as, as things shift, the pipes, as water flow should pipes, they do shift as the, the temperature change, the ground does change and shift. So you always have some movement. It's just, it's a fact of life of our system and a lot of systems actually have the same issue. So.
Okay. So it's just something you have to deal with over.
Yeah. And I'll give my credit to my crew. This happened in one week, uh, day apart, um, and they stuck with them both times and they got them done. So, uh, you know, you know, we worked in the second one, we had to bring in outside, uh, contractor Larson Excavation, who, who was able to bring their equipment out, mobilize very quickly and help us out. Uh, but both cases, our, our crew stayed with it. So I'll give a lot of kudos to those staff.
Sean, what, uh, the picture on the right where you have long, uh, distance there, what do you use to backfill?
In that case, we brought in, um,
Clean, clean material?
Yeah, a little bit better material.
Potty sort.
Yeah, we brought in several truckloads of, 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 of granular AB material and actually shaded around the pipe as much as we could. And then, and then when they pushed back in the backfill, they, they tried to keep the larger rocks out.
But when you go, it's maybe only six or eight feet long, the trench, uh, you just try and use what's there, but be careful.
Yeah, like the smaller excavation on, on the, uh, the left, that, that was completely backfilled with AB material and didn't make sense to do any native. So everything that got hauled out, we actually, since we vacuum excavated it, it all got hauled off site anyways, to begin with. But, uh, yeah, I'm not showing the, the pile of material that they actually had to excavate out. It's sitting next to that excavator off of, of photo and it's, it's size that hole.
And that's the gas line next to it?
Uh, that's the abandoned gas line.
Okay.
So there is the new gas line that I understand we had the opportunity to partner with, but we chose not to several years ago. There's actually about, just off the frame, about 10 feet to the, uh, the west of that, where it crosses the wash. So this is the second break on this line since I've been here. The other wash was in the bottom of the, of the wash.
I remember.
Yeah. The holes, but it was actually deeper. So. So again, some of the challenges the crew has, and again, it, it sort of broke our record of, 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 of lowering our bar on the, the water loss chart. So. So this is our wastewater flows at the water ranch. The last few years we've seen, uh, we haven't been able to see a real, a regular pattern. Besides for the larger ones, obviously we started with COVID and it's, it really drastically changed our wastewater flows in the town. We, except for the fact that we, you know, we, we are less in the summer and we, we, we peak in the winter time. So, uh, it's both also the, the liquid flow and the, the loadings in the, and the, the amount of material that we're having the tree changes. So, um, it's starting to come back up. It's trending back up to the 2021 there a little bit. You see we're a little bit down, but the flow do vary. We can see it, uh, weekend to weekend in the town and the flows. Um, this is in, uh, one of the biggest water customers on the town system is actually the water we deliver for irrigation to the Ranch Manana golf course. So that this slide just gives everybody an example of where the water comes in. They come into that East Lake. We, we have a water line from our water treatment plant as well as, uh, our effluent line from a wastewater treatment plant to deliver water and then cascade down and they, they take water out of the, of the West Lake. Um, but we do actually have an overflow. Um, so we do monitor that overflow of the water that actually, if they don't use it, it, and because we don't have a place to store the water, it overflows and it's, it's a water resource that we do lose. And that's what we're trying to track on this, uh, chart here. Um, and this is the, uh, amount of water. Actually it's not, doesn't show the water, water of flows, but this is the deliveries to the lake system itself, uh, showing the, the three components, uh, that we've, uh, sent to them. So the, uh, bottom orange is the wastewater treatment plant flows. Uh, the red is the, uh, the, um, water treatment camp. Uh, it's the, uh, wash, backwash water from the Trident filters and, and includes the bypass water for the Paul membranes because the Paul membranes, uh, they, they don't like the fixed flow of our delivery system up there. So we do generate some loss because of that. And then at certain times of the year, they, the golf courses do, uh, golf course, sorry, does request raw cap waters to make up, especially during the summertime because their lakes get low. Uh, this summer it got fairly low because we couldn't keep up with their demands, their irrigation demands. And that's the, uh, the blue on top. Uh, it will change very quickly on us because they'll be suddenly taking deliveries. And if we have a good monsoon storm, the lakes will actually fill up very quickly and their demand drops. So we have to manage this and we actually have staff go out and watch and monitor the lakes themselves. We, we both look at the overflow value, um, at the, um, the weir structure. And, and we actually physically get eyes on it once a week to see where they're at and communicate with them. And this is something we've been working with. Again, this is an annualized flow and this is showing the, uh, deliveries to their pond system is the blue lines. And then the orange is actually what we were able to bill because the way the contract is structured is that we can only bill them for the water they take out of the lake system. And you can see in August, because, uh, we have a fixed flow in some cases with the effluent, we have nowhere else but the town's effluent. And the fact that the backwash system at the treatment plant and the Paul divert water, we can only send it up the pipeline. So you can see in August, when they, um, we had some monsoon storms, their irrigation demand dropped considerably. They didn't need to irrigate, uh, but we couldn't change our flows to them. And, uh, the chart before, actually just the week before the monsoon storms, we were trying to help them keep up. So we were actually delivering them raw cap water and we had to turn that off as soon as the monsoons came. So it is a balancing act that we work with them as a partner in the confines of the contract. Uh, and this is an attempt, again, since they're such a large user, we do a lot of evaluations and look at the Ranch Manana flows. Uh, we measure the overflow, which is the orange bar and the, uh, the, the red is a calculated evaporation. We, we actually have a, a evaporation pond in Miracle Park County, uh, has and puts online. The data is actually, um, from Lake Pleasant. So fairly close. So we try to come up with what's going into that. And, and we've started conversations with them about how we can make that system more efficient. Part of that is going to be on the town side to figure out how we can control our deliveries to them better. Jumping into our regulatory side, one of the things that we have to do is protect the water system, um, from people sending stuff back to us. We want to give it to our customers and bill them for it. Uh, but we don't want the stuff coming back at us. So, uh, that's our backflow, uh, program. Uh, we do have, using outside vendor BSI online is the firm that we work with. Uh, so we set, uh, the accounts up and then what happens is that the annual backflows, uh, uh, inspection reports get sent out to the customers. The customers then have someone, uh, complete that and then upload it into the system. So we track that. So, uh, we're about 70, 70% compliant. So they'll get a notice. They'll get a couple of notices on that. Typically we'll follow up with them on that, but overall the, the system is working, uh, pretty good for us. It's, uh, we're not looking to do any major revamps to the system. And we have just under 700 devices that are part of that program. I've talked about it several times and we're still just working on the finalizing it, which is working on the town's pre-treatment program. So that's on the wastewater side. So again, on the water side, we want to pre- prevent people from bringing, sending stuff back into the water system to keep it a, uh, uh, sealed, uh, secure sanitary, uh, seal system. On the wastewater side, we want to, uh, work with those customers that could be potentially contributing to the wastewater flows that, uh, any material that could damage either the collection system or the treatment process itself is our wastewater treatment plant. And that's, that's our pre-treatment program. So we've been working for the last few months with a firm called Western Environmental to look at that program to come up with some better practices for us. We've been, we were supposed to have a, a second demonstration. We're looking at a software package to help us manage that similar to BSI, I online, but BSI does not do it. Um, where we would set the program up and then the, all the information would be collected and managed by the online software and a database. Right now we've been using spreadsheets and folders. So it would become more efficient. Um, and then the, uh, the, the hauling, uh, people who do the work within, uh, just upload their information. We can send all the notifications out through that system. So, uh, we've completed, uh, the inventory. We've looked at some, uh, best management practices who will, uh, get that information out. We're talking about actually having all the, um, people as part of the program actually enter into new contracts. So we, they understand the limitations and what they're responsible for to basically do a reset on the program is what we're looking to do. We're trying to wrap that up before the end of the calendar year. The Carefree Disconnect Project is still working ahead. Uh, as Kerry alluded to, and I get the slide next, we'll show the disconnect is happening. Um, but, um, uh, Neighborhood C is the area, um, on the top of the, the area of, of the project up there is, uh, the area north of Cave Creek Road. It's basically Scopa Trail runs through the middle of that area. That has been converted over to, um, Carefree. So all those accounts in that area, that neighborhood. One of the disconnects or one of the reasons for the shutdown next week is actually the last disconnect that they need to do is at Galloway Drive and Cave Creek Road. And the only way we can give them a safe closure on the line is, um, to actually shut the, the Galloway Booster Station down. That's one of the reasons for that closure. So they'll be cutting the line, capping a dead end line for us so that we don't have a large dead end line at the, at the edge of our system. So that's an advantage for the town at the end result we're going to get. Um, so Carefree has been changing out meters. The neighborhood C and B have been largely changed out. Um, the neighborhood A, which is the area along, uh, Carefree Highway. Uh, they ran a situation of, of, uh, meter deliveries. So for the last couple of months, they actually had to stop, uh, doing any meter change outs because, uh, they were waiting for the vendor. Uh, as my meeting with them this week, they said they got that delivery in. So they'll be changing out the rest of those meters. Uh, and it's been working out well. Um, they've been, uh, as, as, as long as we're still putting our water into the pipe, they actually do, um, they will do the monthly billing on our billing cycle and send us the information. It's been working out as, as best as I could hope. And it's, it, they've got to a system where it comes very smoothly into our billing system. So we can still, even though their meters have been changed out, uh, we're getting that information and still being able to bill the customers until the physical change orders or changeovers have occurred. Uh, they're still scheduled. Um, I think, um, uh, they're looking, I've been hearing, uh, final completion probably six months away. Uh, but they'll start to take over some of the neighborhood B next week, uh, and then neighborhood A, the area along Carefree Highway, they're starting to get some of that together and they're starting to work on, on taking over those accounts. Neighborhood A is the area where we have about nine different disconnect sites though, to be coordinated.
Sean, this is finished.
Yeah.
How isolated will our system be from there so that we won't have leakage or making a mistake and someone leaving a valve open and having, uh, our water go their direction? Are there areas that we need, that are, that need to be secure?
No, we're actually the, the old system. No, we're actually, the the old system actually had four locations where there were interconnects. And in some cases, it was just a vault, a valve isolating the systems. The with the new disconnects, they're physically disconnecting the pipes. So we have a cap with a a. A missing section of pipe between us and them. So there's no way for that to click it forward. Uh, take disconnect. So we've been very adamant on that and they've been following through on that, even when they they, as we work our way around, we're making sure that there's air gaps between our system. So we don't just use a closed valve. We actually use two valves in a way to tell that the pipe is empty between the two. And at the end of the day. We've been uh, very clear with them and they've been following through on it is making sure that we have physical disconnect at all locations. We don't have any interconnects unless they're planned. We still, we're actually, they're working on the new interconnect site at Bella Vista because we do still have the interconnect agreement with them to wheel their water for them. And that's going to happen at Bella Vista and Cave Creek Road, so.
But that will be the only only interconnection between the.
Uh, the other one they were talking, they'd like to have is actually at New River and Cave Creek, Cave Creek Road. So they'd like to have two metered interconnect sites with us. And besides for that, there's no physical connection between the two of them and yeah, the systems. So that's one of the reasons our staff have been out there. Oh, you jumped ahead. That's like for me. Uh, yeah, this is an example where uh, you can see in the middle slide there, the 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 pipe is physically cut and they've put the cap on it and then we're concreting that up. So effectively the pipe has been capped and there's no way to physically link the two together. So. Um, they've been very good to work with as a partner to uh, make sure that that we're we're part of all their decisions and we're seeing all this and witness everything. So we're very comfortable with the work they're doing. So I'll give them credit. They've got a good team. Um, their contractor and their consultant have been working very closely with us, so. It's the best, best way I can hope for considering the circumstances. Let's put it that way. So, um, are you controlling it, Brian, or me? I am. I didn't do anything. I'm trying to go back. There we go. Um, so Monday night, Kerry alluded to um, we, they they are trying to finish off one disconnect for the area north of Cave Creek Road and one to the south. Um, and that's why we're having to shut down. It was originally, we anticipated just having to turn the gallery booster station off, but when they actually exposed the pipes. Uh, we believe there's a risk of at the one disconnect location that we might get a pipe slip and and have an uh, of of. Uncontrolled break. So we've actually agreed to shut down the uh, area in Cave Creek along uh, south of Cave Creek Road back to Indian uh, Schoolhouse Road. Uh, for that closure. So that's the addition. We've done that to give them a safe works on, comes down to, yeah, we don't have any very many isolation valves in those lines. Uh, typically when you shut off the lines, because then that area of the system, we're running over a hundred pounds of pressure, you need to make sure that that valve you can shut, has some distance. So it's not just going to slip out. Uh, and we don't have one to isolate in that area. So it's a little bit larger area. But at the end of the day, I think we're going to get a better uh, disconnect also and they're willing to to work with us on that, so. But I just want to make sure we're aware that I'll be uh, this Monday night, uh, they're all start their work at nine o'clock, but we won't physically disconnect or shut down our system till ten o'clock. And then uh, they'll be back online. They, you're saying maybe by three o'clock they'll be done, or three in the morning, but um, we allow for it for a little unknowns would happen this. We've been bitten a few times. Uh, just wanted to share with uh, council our cap water request for next year. And since I put the slide together, we've actually had an update to this. Uh, we do our order uh, by October to the Central Arizona Project. So they can combine everybody's orders together, bring it ahead. Uh, the transfer of the water rights has not occurred between the um, uh, our municipal and industrial water supply. So initially, we we uh, the CAP had asked us to um, place our orders with Carefree and and assuming that Carefree was taking the water. Because the subcontract has been done, we had to do modification and add that back into our our pot. We also do a delivery of uh, water to uh, of um, the non-Indian agricultural water uh, for Desert Hills and we've built that schedule into it. And you can see here, we've actually looking to get some recharge. Um, we're working with Carefree. Because the transfer, we don't think will happen until the first quarter of of next calendar year of uh, go through the Bureau of Reclamation, Department of Interior, get finalized. We're effectively the 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 full amount of the the municipal industrial waters in in our supply. I'm going to have to pay the capital cost on that, but because we're doing that, uh, uh, Carefree and I discussed actually allowing us just to recharge that water. Um, so next year, we look like we might be able to recharge up to a thousand acre feet of water on the town's behalf. So we were paying for it, but it gives us a little bit of advantage at the end of the project to do that because they don't need it to deliver to their customers and they won't be on our system. So we don't have to deliver it to our customer, so. So it's a little bonus that we able to to pull out of the project. We've had a not only distribution line breaks, we've actually had some improvements made to the system. In this case, we worked with the the developer who's doing that, um, the Verizon store. Uh, on of forty uh, forty forty ninth street. There was actually a gap in the system when I first came on board that was shown on our maps. It was completed. It was not. Um, so we were able to work with them. Uh, as part of their their work, they actually uh, went beyond their property and we worked with them to get it done. And what you're seeing at the top end, we actually tied into a a collection of four inch lines at the top end, but we actually, it was nice to be able to work with them and and get a gap completed in our distribution system. A new valving into that our our staff now know what valves they can operate and trust.
And they know where it is.
They know where it is. No excuses. Um, this is actually a picture from one of the disconnects uh, in uh, with Carefree where, you know, it was a nighttime job. Uh, we, they tried to limit the work. If it's going to have a big impact, they've been, they've been respectful and just doing that. If it's a smaller area, they've done some work during the day. Um, just for safety in this case, uh, they were working in front of an area that uh, at the end of the day, this is by Scopa Trail and seventy seven seventy second street. Uh, they did all, most of this work and then we ended up finding out there was another feed to this area. So that went back to um, an area of mapping. So this is one that we went back to and actually at the end of the day, some of this work was for not, uh, and but they worked with us to actually make the disconnect work properly, so. On our wastewater side, uh, got alluded to in your financial report, uh, we did, one of our capital projects this year was working with inside the headworks and getting a new screen. And this is what a new screen looks like. It's it's really cute, actually.
Get much your money anymore, dude.
It's mostly underground. And it does a job that I greatly appreciate it to be there for, so. It's working very well. Um, it's actually collecting material. It hasn't made it up to the top of the chute, but it actually is taking material out that uh, otherwise the staff would see floating in our basins. How much it's actually working effectively. Yes, I bring that forward, so uh, flushable wipes are not flushable.
No.
They're called disposable wipes. They should not be disposable, they should not be flush. You should not be flushing anything that it says uh, except toilet paper or something. It can disintegrate in our sewer system. Uh, we've actually had to change our operational practices. This this bar screen does collect some of that material that gets down to our system. Um, because of the way the town's collection system is laid out, we have uh, uh, three list stations that collect most of the flow and then pump it out. We've gone down to operationally every two weeks, we have to bring in a vector truck, uh, and we um, both proactively and reactively vector them out on a two week fix schedule. We're getting so much material in the in the wet wells at the list stations that it is clogging material, uh, our clogging instrumentation. And we do get some of it makes it down to the plant because we do actually have some direct collections, uh, connections, uh, along Carefree um, highway that feed into it. That we're getting material down there too, so. Yeah, uh, flushable wipes are not flushable. Please take that to heart. It it impacts our operation. It impacts our staff. Um, yeah, it's, they're not good. Uh, good note on that. You can see in the background is the old grit classifier unit. So that was actually taken a couple of weeks ago. Um, the new unit got delivered six weeks early, so it's actually physically there and that the old one, we we were able to remove in a few hours. So we're just working with the vendor to get the new one installed. So we will have uh, one of the major projects we're trying to get done this year was to reinstate the um, what we refer to as the headworks. At the way for our treatment plant and we're actually ahead of our original schedule because the piece of equipment came in earlier, which is nice for a change. Um, the wastewater treatment plant itself has two large treatment basins. It's as they call, we call them SBR basin, sequence batch reactor basins. Um, they actually have an air system, the air uh, of both mixes, the the liquid as well as provides oxygen for the biology. So wastewater treatment is actually a microbiology treatment. It's not, we're not adding, we're not actually adding chemicals. We use chemicals in the backend. But we're we're basically using biology. So in this case, we were having issues and council allowed us to do a capital program to um, repair the irrigation systems. This is an example of some of the the discs that we've pulled out uh, so far. So we have nearly twenty three hundred between the two basins and we've been working with a diver and their schedule to come in. We actually have a diver going down a full dry suit and actually physically changing these out. So we have about two hundred and fifty that he's changed out and SBR basin number two, that was the basin that staff were having a hard time actually um, uh, getting. Uh, challenges with uh, the staff are really good at making it work, but they were having challenges and just with the two hundred and fifty of the the twelve hundred that are in that basin. Being changed out, it's made of of an improvement to the process, so. Uh, yeah, we're going to continue doing that out. Uh, we did look at an option to try and drain the basins, but uh, uh, we felt that getting the divers in to do the work, especially with SBR two. Having the issues it was, it's most efficient way for us to do the work. Uh, we've been doing, continue to work at Rancho Manana List Station, this is an example, some work that was just wrapped up recently. So uh, it was looking pretty bad thereafter the most recent uh, storm. So we actually had a contractor come in and help us finish it off because uh, we didn't have the staff resources to do it. And this is a good example where within our budget, we have contractual dollars to bring someone in. Uh, we cleaned up the site. Uh, this is also uh, in the last quarter. We've been able to do some piping. We had a pipe um, start leaking underneath the the slab as it exited the wet well. Um, so without ripping out all the concrete at the site, we came up with another solution, which actually is the core drill through the top and actually bring out new lines above. And it also allowed us to put in flow meters. So we actually now can monitor the flows of the pumps before we had to estimate stuff. So we're trying to make uh, you know, the best use of these problems. Hopefully there's not anymore, but you know, we've we've uh, done a lot of work at this site. And I think it's looking better than it has and operating better than it has to. And I'll move past that. Another capital project we had is actually at the uh, we purchased the Paul membranes, uh, you know, we leased them for a year and then we purchased them two years ago. But access has always been a challenge at that site because it wasn't designed for them and they're being elevated trailers. So this is uh, we have one project going on at the treatment plant to add a catwalk. So uh, this is an example, what's going in. The staircase you're seeing in the forefront is actually um, temporary and it'll be uh, uh, that was actually going to be rotated. But the the vendor's been working with us, but it's made a nice elevated walkway for the staff to better access that area and get around all the piping that's out there. So if you've been out at the site, you'll see it's a it's a bit of a challenge for staff. This is making a substantial improvement. Another project that we had, we were trying to work on is actually to uh, work with um, uh, we've had MGC do some quotes on repiping the plant a little bit better. So I mentioned, we have some losses with these Paul trailers because we have a constant flow coming up from the pipeline, effectively three steps. We we have either one pump running up the pipeline, two or three, so we have three sort of flow variables. The Paul trailers want a little more variability in that flow. So uh, right now we divert that water into a reclaimed water pit, which then gets us up to the golf course. But we're thinking we can do some onsite piping so we can collect that at an existing tank system and then this push it back into the pipeline as needed. So that'll help the efficiency of the plant, especially during the winter time when we don't need to run the Trident, so we can just run off of Pauls, so. And uh, I'm gonna wrap up with the the City Phoenix Interconnect site. So you are seeing the most uh, recent layout. This is the fifty percent design schematic of the new interconnect site with Phoenix, which is located along uh, Cave Creek Road. The just west of Cave Creek Road, just north of where Lowe's is, where store requests is, we own that property of land. So uh, you're seeing at the bottom side of the site, uh, we will enter uh, the site from Cave Creek Road going south, southbound. Um, and have to come in and turn, uh, we are doing a dual zone booster station there, so we're tying into the existing pipe work. And it'll feed zone one, which is the direct area and actually also push into the sixteen inch line up to nearie. So in effect, this will help supplement the nearie site and then in in emergency, we can actually send water up to nearie and then into the rest of the system. So we could take the the water treatment plant offline in the cap pipeline and do major work, which is a huge bonus for the for the town. Uh, we'll have the storage reservoir at the site and um, uh, also provisions to uh, relocate the cap for booster pump station. Which is currently in the vault in front of the Lowe's uh, to this site with provisions for a small storage reservoir. So we could again, uh, uh, buffer the flow up to the treatment plant so it better matches and is more efficient with the membranes up at the plant site. So uh, we're again, Black and Beach is doing a great job. We're fifty percent designs. I've actually reached out to um, some of the neighbors. Um, let them know what's going on, give some feedback. We're trying to be respectful, doing some burming et cetera. Uh, and doing some landscaping around the site, uh, using, there's a lot of native salvageable material on the site itself. Uh, we have the, we're trying to select a construction manager at risk for this project, so we have a pre-proposal meeting next week. Uh, with proposals due from them, uh, the second week of December, so we should be able to make a selection, at least get down to whether we're doing interviews by the first week of January. And move forward with that. And uh, as was talked about earlier, we we are looking to finish off the whiff alone, though. Part of the whiff alone is actually being held up because we don't have the rates to support us getting the debt service on the whiff alone. So we have a bunch of moving parts on this, but they're all moving forward. And with that, I can take any questions.
Western Council. Vice Mayor.
A quick one. The uh, one million gallon reservoir. What do you anticipate? I know the design is not done yet, but what is the anticipated height of that above uh, uh, original ground level?
Um, I would have to, we're partly, it's it's partially depressed, similar to our Rockaway and our nearie reservoirs. Um, I believe we're depressing it seven feet and the entire structure and side walls like twenty five, so there'll be probably ten or fifteen feet, probably. Depending on where you are, because the grade drops down visible um, above site wall.
Seven feet, that's not bad.
No, uh, fifteen feet.
Oh, fifteen.
Yeah. If you, I I think it's probably similar to our nearie site. If you've ever been out to the nearie site, you don't realize that the bottom of the nearie reservoir is ten feet below grade.
Now, this is a piece of Cave Creek that's in the middle of Carefree, isn't it?
Uh, immediately to the south is Carefree and across the, across Cave Creek Road uh, to the east is Cave Creek. Or Carefree, sorry. So we have Cave Creek residents on our our um, west and northern boundaries of the site.
Okay.
So we're right at the corner, one of the little corner pieces where we jog in and out the.
Okay, so it's not a tiny enclave, it's a.
It'll be real popular.
Yes, it's, it'll make everybody really happy.
Yeah, again, most of the site you're seeing near, all the pump work, et cetera, uh, from the front gate, there'll be an eight foot block wall around the site containing all that. And in the back half, it'll just be the reservoir similar to what we have at the the nearie and Rockaway sites because it's a concrete reservoir with a with a berm. Uh, isolated, I s- um, buffering that from the the neighboring residential properties, so.
Okay, thank you.
Reg. Sean, we deliver on occasion cap water that we've treated to Rancho Manana. Is there a separate charge for that or it just goes in with whatever the contract demands?
Um, Mayor Councilmember, we don't treat, we don't send them treated cap water. We send them either raw cap water or um, the, what we call the backwash. Or the wastewater from the treatment process. The water that again, as as you treat water, you actually generate a waste stream because you're removing material from that stream. So uh, they they select, they they give them that. The way the contract is structured is that uh, they, we can send them the effluent. They can also send them the backwash water. If we had wells available, we could send them uh, well water. Um, and then we deliver to them at their lake structures, but they only get billed for the water that they actually pull out through their irrigation system. That's why it's critical. We had the conversation with them about both evaporative losses, uh, what we believe are some liner losses of their lakes. Because uh, this summer it actually got very low and uh, we are actually able to do a quick assessment of their liners and they're not the best shape. Uh, and then the other, the third component is the overflow of the system. Again, once the lakes top up, there is an actual overflow pipe that goes down to the wash. Um, and that, we actually have a meter on that, so we actually have two years, two plus years with the good data to know how that system works. But the contract, it says that uh, there is a provision depending on which source of water, we're sending in raw cap water or effluent. Um, we have a cost uh, model that we actually have to follow based on the contract that we charged them for. But then we have to factor in that they only get charged for, we send them two deliveries of water, but we only get charged, we we charge them effectively the first. The effluent water is more expensive, so we charge them that first and then anything else um, uh, gets charged at the other rate. So it's a bit of a, it's a bit of a strange billing system, but it's 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 been, yeah, we do it monthly. Yeah, because I was a headache too, so.
Well, thank you, Sean. Councilman Silver.
Sean, I'm. Not all that familiar with the million gallon reservoir. Take me through that again, how much below grade it is, how much above grade and is it going to be enclosed in any way?
Yeah, it 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 will be a concrete reservoir. Um, well, we discussed.
For interrupting, will this be similar to the one that Cave Creek is just finished on Tom Darlington by the Boulders?
Oh, uh, Carefree, the reservoir that they constructed is a three hundred thousand gallon reservoir. Oh, Carefree, the reservoir that they constructed is a three hundred thousand gallon reservoir.
Three times larger.
And they also elected to, to bury it completely. So they have it completely depressed and.
It's not buried completely, not the way I've seen.
Yeah, I think you can see the top little room of it, but this will be more like are the towns nearie reservoir or Rockaway reservoir? Where you can see the side of a concrete reservoir. Again, I think the sidewall probably you'll see fifteen feet of, of mass of concrete. Be like a stucco fish.
Above grade.
Above grade. It actually has a solid roof. It's actually a little bit of a domed roof is what they're recommending right now, but that'll come back through the actual design. What gets selected, the Rockaway and nearie sites have a flat roof on them. Yeah. So it'll look like a large wall of concrete in effect, a stuck over wall.
Kind of resemble just what starts of the water plant, the, you know, the Great Wall of Cave Creek. And the Hovanian site. I mean, you got.
I'd like to say better than that. Yeah, we won't have the, we, we won't see the courses of block where.
See the same height.
Yeah, I can't remember how tall those, those fairly wall, maybe the three setbacks, I think of that is for the high.
One last question. What, what's the diameter of this thing?
You caught me off guard. I think it's a hundred and fifty or hundred or two hundred feet.
Seventeen feet above the ground.
And about seven feet below grade.
Yeah. Well, you can't see that. I'm, yeah, the residents will see above the ground seventeen feet.
Yeah. For comparison, our Rockaway reservoir is actually two, two point two million gallons storage capacity. The nearie site is one million gallon. Nearie is actually more compact, actually goes down deeper and it actually is over ten feet below grade at the nearie site.
This will easily be viewable driving on Cave Creek Road.
I, we don't expect it to, because if the property actually drops off to the back and you have the mass of the, the block wall in front of it, the eight foot block wall. So from Cave Creek Roads, you might see the top of the reservoir. Because the, the site does actually drop off to the about ten feet from east to west. And great. So.
Thank you.
Are we done?
Very much so.
There's public comment on that one as well.
David Phelps.
David, talk fast.
The number one thing, the plan to have, I would assume you're going to have a couple of interconnects with Carefree when we're all done with the disconnects. Are we going to plan?
You're going to ask me so I can ask him, remember?
Ernie, would you mind asking Sean if we're going to have a plan to have interconnects with Carefree when we're done doing our disconnects?
Sean, well, we have a plan to have it or we have a plan to have it as back to Carefree when we're done with this.
Mary, yes, we do. We actually are planning to have two interconnect sites because we still have the wheeling agreement in place with Carefree. So we can treat and deliver their water to them. So that, that is still a valid contract. The one site is being planned at Bella Vista Drive next to San Suise, San Suise Restaurant, actually. Actually the next parcel over west of, west of there. The other one is at New River and Cave Creek Road is what the other site would be. So we'll have two locations that we can send, treat and deliver and deliver to them, treat water.
And the water can go both ways, mayor Sean.
They're, they're, Mr. Mayor, they're a single direction. We've asked to actually have them a single flow because we do not have a reciprocal wheeling agreement with them. And we don't have an emergency operation agreement with them. And that's standard practice now in the distribution systems that before everybody thought that you, you can interconnect systems. But as soon as you co mingle water, if there's ever a water quality issue, now you've got both companies pulling in their fingers. Yeah. So we're actually, we'll have a double check assemblies at both to limit flow. That's actually similar to what they actually have with Scottsdale. Scottsdale requires them and mandates that they have double checks also. So it's one direction.
So we can only provide water to them. They can't help provide.
We can only provide water to them. They can't provide water to us.
Correct.
Yeah. We'll have Phoenix.
That's fair.
Yeah, we'll have Phoenix.
In time we will. That's, that's a fact. I just, I would rather have a backup to our backup. And I think it's short sighted of us not to be working on that backup to the.
You know how long it takes to build things and do things and you know about the, the relationship, David. Come on lighten up.
Don't worry, Ernie. They'll see a change of leadership here one of these days and we'll be able to knock on each other's.
Yeah, I hope so.
So it seems like at staff level, we're working together really well. So for everything we've been through, Sean's sitting here with testimony saying, hey, this is going as good as he thought it could ever go.
Yeah, but we can't get any of their water.
Well, no, we are actually getting three hundred and seventy eight bankable acre feet for, and what are we paying for that? Just the price of the water and.
Yeah, this price of the water. Yeah.
So I think that is a benefit to the relationship as it turns out. And I don't know that anybody could have foreseen that six months ago.
Yeah.
So back to the drawing that you were showing us on our new. Three and a half acre site with the tank and the retention basin is the retention basin there made to contain. The wash flow or the onsite water generation from a hundred year event or?
It's, we actually.
What's a retention basin for Sean?
There's actually a fairly significant.
Ernie, my one eye is looking at.
Yeah. So there's, there's a fairly significant washes, wash process, the north end of the property. Brian, can you bring up that slide again? So the, the retention basin is actually just similar to any development is we have to retain our onsite water. So it's actually just because we're do the improvements, it's actually the amount of storm water that we could be generating. So that doesn't go into the wash. We actually have to retain it onsite and then it can get let off into the wash. So we've, we're following the same store water practices that any developer, developer would have to.
So I'm not seeing any scale. I realize it's just a photocopy of a drawing, but are you, do you know if that's a one foot? Delineation on the, on the lines that are there. And I'm trying to figure out if I'm standing at the bottom of that.
Yeah, I believe if I remember correctly, and I think I remember, I think the, the retention area is about four feet deep, four or five feet deep.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm assuming we have no more.
No additional comments.
Thank you, Sean. Let's move on to agenda item number eight, isn't it? Yeah. Council discussion regarding the draft drought management plan is prepared and presented by town staff.
Yeah. Michelle Vanqueathan should be joining us. She was on, Brian, can you see Michelle?
She's probably gone to sleep.
She said she was there. Okay. And can you make her so she can actually speak?
I am available. I, I am keeping my video off because I'm having a difficulty with my eyes right now. So I look pretty scary.
We always appreciate your comments though, Michelle and, and help here. We do have a presentation on this. Okay. So we are presenting on the update to the, we're referring to is the water storage and drought management plan for the town. Quickly with the water advisory committee of the town, actually in twenty nineteen, it worked on development, emergency drought and water curtailment plans. What we call the document. It's actually listed out and called out in, in town code that the town should have a drought preparedness plan. At that time, we had listed three containment conditions, the stage one through three. And there's proposal for some water rate surcharges at the time, what wasn't followed through on is to do surcharges. The, you know, the water advisory committee and a document even approved by councils can't do that, that require code changes to authorize that to happen. So. Since two thousand and nineteen, what has changed? The Colorado River condition has not improved. It is worsened. So we are in our twenty third year of a drought in this state. We've actually had to get into declared shortages on the Colorado River, which is something that, you know, we've never seen before and we've had to deal with. And then on the town's front, we've actually adopted the twenty twenty one water resource policy. That was put into place to help look at our water resources and how help sustain the town's water resources. And put a limit on new water services outside our municipal limits. And also created a volumetric limit on new accounts to try and preserve the town's water resources. The town's physical infrastructure has changed and is changing. You know, this, we have the city of Phoenix interconnect is coming ahead. And we've now, we're able to secure a new CAP, central, those are our project, non Indian agricultural water resource to be used for desert hills. So things have changed. And even from a regulatory standpoint, Arizona Department of Water Resources has been working on the fifth management plan for the Phoenix active management area. That's actually the, the state governing law. The state actually has the nineteen eighty groundwater management act and then the, we are in the Phoenix active management area. So they actually have plans that they're supposed to be putting in place. So they're wrapping that document up. So there's a lot of things changing in addition to the shortages on Colorado River. So it made sense for us to take a look at the document. And come up with something better that suits the, the needs for the, the town. Real quickly, our cap supplies, the town does have a municipal and industrial supply, our subcontract with CAP. Once the transfer is completed, which hasn't occurred just yet, we'll have two thousand, two hundred and twenty eight acre feet of municipal industrial water. We do have them existing groundwater wells and we have groundwater rights right now. None of the wells are functionally operational. But that's something that as part of this plan, we've said that, you know, as the future of things continue, that's something we need to pursue for that. We started the investigation on those wells and see if they are viable, something we'd want to continue. Desert Hills has its three groundwater wells that we've had its challenges for. I've been in front of council a number of times in my tenure here at the town. Dealing with issues with those wells. And now we have the new non Indian agricultural CAP supplies for them. And then again, reinforcing, we do have the water policy. And as we move forward, we really want to look, as we're starting our master planning efforts and finishing up the contract with our consultant. And I'll bring forward to councils, we want to look at water storage and water recharge options. You know, we've, we started recharging on the town's behalf and generating long-term storage credits, which is good. Now we've got to figure out the back end of that. How do we get that water back out? What's the best use? And again, with the imbalance that we have with our ranch Minyana deliveries, how can we, can we do anything locally that we can get a benefit from, from the town? So last time we talked to council was in August fourth and we prepared a, the draft at that time, we. Tried to have that document better tied to the, the, the current town's resources than the two thousand and nineteen document. We accounted for the fact that we do have the city of Phoenix interconnect coming on board. We, at that time outlined five levels of demand reduction strategies tied to the cap shortage tiers. And we tried to come up with some tables and sort of, you know, recommendations at certain tiers, what, what would be requested. We heard from council and when we looked at some things that we thought would be better, would better work for us. So now we're presenting you the new draft. And the new edits to the plan, we, there's some text cleanup throughout the document itself. But the biggest thing is that we, we thought just having it tied to the cap water shortages. And when we actually looked at it, it really didn't fit the needs for the town because right now we're not using all of our CAP supplies. So we actually have excess. So if you tie it to the, the, the drought shortages, you know, we've asked, CAP has asked us to reduce our request for non Indian agricultural water for next year. It's a new supply. We, we have purchased for desert hills where they've asked us to do a twenty five percent reduction. But when you hear the tier shortages and the reductions, when we're not using our full allocation of the municipal and industrial supplies, it's really didn't fit the mold. So tying us back to their shortages. So what we came up with is what we're referring to as a, a. What was it? A shortage percentage calculation, which looks at staff actually projecting out what we think demands will be based on the current use of the system. And what we think will be growth in the upcoming year, based on our available water resources where we know in advance, because we talked to the CAP staff. And we're notified by CAP staff of what we can expect to get ordered next year. And that's a calculation we do. And then the shortage declaration comes out of that calculation. So it's unique to Cave Creek. So that was a change from the, the August presentation that we gave to you. And did I put, actually I didn't put it in there. It's in the report and it's actually in the back of the dependencies. We, we've created a table. So the thought would be that we would do that calculation, come back to council at least once a year. And then give you our estimate, what's going to happen if we are getting into a serious condition, then that would actually be. Set the stage of the drought response plan that we're trying to do. So that's what triggers it. It's not just a CAP allocation. We make it, it Cave Creek specific. I'm looking at how our. Water resources are and actually also factors in that now that we are recharging some of our water, the council can give us goals on how much recharge you want to do. So that can be factored in. So it's not just the, the demands of our customers. It's actually, if we can't make our recharge goals, that actually can factor into the fact that. We might need to, to ask our customers to curtail their demands and lower it. From that point forward, the, the report is very similar to the last version in that it, it does list at the different stages of enforcement. Or different methods of responding to that. We're always wanting to be in what we refer to as stage zero, which is, is really looking at our outreach and education. I talked about some of the, the work that we're doing and some of the stuff that we can do with the, the better metering that we have in. Desert Hills allows us to be more proactive with talking with customers and looking at identifying leaks and stuff like that. You know, with what's going on, I'll talk about more later with the rate studies. It's one of the things we've heard from our, a lot of our customers is how do I save money? Because you know, how do I save water so that I don't have to pay as much? So that's our conservation outreach. That's our stage zeros. That's, that's always going to continue for the town. We always want to have them reaching out and trying to be better and, and lowering individual usages. But beyond that, then we go into our stage one, two, three and four. And that's actually setting physical limits that we're trying to obtain. So the next step beyond this plan is we, if council agrees with the edits as provided, we would then ask how the, the, the policy or the, the document adopted as a policy. And then we'll start working as staff to actually provide code revisions that allow us to enforce this. Because when we get into the higher shortage tiers, especially when we get into a stage four, where we're seeing the water shortage percentage is more than twenty six percent. That means that we are in a serious situation that we cannot provide enough water to meet our current customer demands. There has to be some serious repercussions. And one of the biggest ones we propose is, is putting on financial constriction. So our higher water tier, so highest two water tiers, we'd be able to actually add a surcharge to those customers. And it'd be something we put into code. So we'd actually come back to council to get, once the declaration is put into place, we'd have the authority via town code to actually enact that. And, and have those higher water users pay surcharges. And that's something that we, we wouldn't have to come back to you again. We would just enact as staff and then we, we come back and tell you, we show you how we're monitoring the program and seeing what's happening. As, as at that point, we're probably, we're at a stage four, I'm probably talking to you monthly on where we are at with our water usage and our, our supplies. But so that was the biggest change from the last one. We had, we talked about the surcharges and some of the other methods before and trying to put those into code. But it's really changing this, the what, the doubt, the drought declaration calculations. We thought that was. More specific to Cave Creek and it's something that we can look at based on our water supplies. So we're not tied to, we, we look at what's happening, you know, on the bigger level, what CAP is saying. And that factors in the fact that they're going to say that, you know, at this point, well, on the horizon for the next two years. But and again, they change year to year, they do a twenty four month projection. There's no shortages on the municipal industrial that they're asking for right now. The conversations we have had with CAP, because we are not using all of our supplies, they're asking us not to request at all. So it's a double edged sword for us. So and then we, we've also set a goal of trying to recharge our excess CAP water to generate long-term storage credit. So it's, it's, we thought this is an effective way for us to factor all this in together, come back to council with it, with a, a bit of a calculation. That comes down to a percentage number that then goes down to a stage of, of restrictions that we're trying to accommodate. Again, following up with code revisions to allow us to do this, you know, we're always trying to be proactive. We don't want to get into a situation of being punitive with customers. But if this drought continues and things get worse for everybody in the state, you know, there's going to be a lot of hard decisions to be made. And this, this sort of sets us up for that ability to make those decisions and, and sadly have to make those directions in the future. So with that, I can take any questions. And again, our goal would be to get some comments and feedback on this document. We'd like to actually bring it back to council just to adopt the policy and then come back at future meetings. And we've actually already got draft outline of the code revisions that we think were, are necessary. But getting the document and the guidance put together with, with this report in concurrence, that this is the way that we should be going. Then allows us to, to wrap up those code revisions. So with that, I can take any questions.
Councilman Morris, I see you turn your microphone on.
I did. Three, three things. Most of them don't require any, it's just a, a request. I think you ought to evaluate. But the first thing is Rancho Minyana. Is Rancho Minyana just another customer or how does that contract come into play? Me and they are such a huge, huge user of water. So this, as I see, never mentions Rancho Minyana's name.
Oh, we didn't call them out specifically. We do have the contractual obligation. Our thought is that they would be captured up in all the code revisions. And, and especially the provision that's currently encoded wasting. Our thought is that they would be captured up in all the code revisions and and, uh, especially the provision that's currently encoded wasting of water that we could might be able to talk about. And Michelle, uh, you had some insights on how we can, uh, talk to them, the the the, Michelle had the, uh, bad experience, like, because I gave them all to her to read all ten contracts, because I read them all, I gave them to her. And, uh, yeah, the the current contract is is very one sided towards them.
That is the worst contract in the history of.
Yeah, this is Michelle, it's very generous, um, to Rancho Manana. And so we do have to honor that contract. But they're also a citizen of the city and they need to follow the same rules that everybody else follows. Like Sean mentioned, you know, waste of water and there there may be areas where they can make improvements just to comply with, uh, conservation codes or 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 waste codes. And those will still apply even though there's a contract, so.
That that it would brings me to the next one, um, I I, Michelle, this is really for you. I mean, I think this needs to, or our our policies need to have some kind of, or needs to have attention, let's say that, to limiting our liability. For example, we've got in here that we can, uh, good, I mean, th- these are disaster scenarios where you say, well, you can't water anything outside and you have to, you can't put water in your pool. Uh, well, you can't do those things, there's going to be damage, especially to the landscaping. So, uh, there there's two pieces coming out of there. One is, um, we need to have it understood who is going to be responsible for that. You know, if I, if I lose this year's tomato crop, maybe that's not a big deal. But if I lose, uh, a, uh, hundred year old Sora cactus, it may be a big deal. So we're going to have to think through, um, how we're going to limit the town's liability. Because if if it happens to one customer, then the other customers pay for that. I mean, it's 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 kind of crazy. So I think we need to look at our terms of service. Every time we go on a website, they have these terms of service. Maybe we need to have a term of service, uh, for the water that spells that out if in drought situations that people had to cover their own.
Michelle and and Bill, actually did look at our current, um, uh, water user, uh, contract that every user signs actually does give us some language because it ties it back to, uh, following the drought, um, uh, the current policies and or any conservation practices the town puts in place. Whether that completely indemnifies us, if say there's damage to, you know, a a large, uh, um, landscape material or, you know, I was thinking of a pool, pool drives out in the line. I'm not sure, I'm not sure, you have any thoughts on that, Michelle?
Um, yeah, I would say, first of all, Bill Sims is the, um, expert on this topic because he handles risk pool questions. You know, at some level, anybody can sue for anything. And the question is, is it going to be a successful suit? So I don't try to avoid the suits because they can be good or bad, but you try to avoid the successful suits. And I think what we need to look at is, is it in your terms of service, which is what you've been talking about? Um, you know, typically utilities will have curtailment tariffs or or stipulations in their, in their rules that say everybody has to follow the conservation rules. The city is also has the argument always that it's it's operating under emergency powers to protect, uh, protect human life and safety, and that is in reflected in the policy, those goals. And so you're you're choosing a higher purpose as a government entity in that situation, and I think that gives you some protection. But yeah, I would defer to Bill Sims for that question, and I know he's not here tonight.
Mayor, we do have the opportunity to call him, he should be available now, he had a another council meeting.
I I I don't know if we even did have him, it's good, I I just bring it up as an issue and we can do it offline, we got a lot of people waiting here. Yes, sleepy eyes. The last thing is the, uh, and I I I monitor much water goes in my pool. And it's currently this year so far, it's three thousand gallons a month is being lost out of, just a s- average small sized pool. So when you take that and you take the, uh, pruning outside landscaping, you know, we've got the potential here of saving or being able to reduce water consumption under admittedly drastic conditions of, you know, seventy percent, eighty percent. I mean, this has some real, uh, teeth if it's followed and if if we're successful in implementing it. But the point here is, we need some communication. If i- i- if we're, if we have the potential of asking people to not put water in their pool, and it may crack and not, uh, watering their landscaping and that there is potential for damages and that we're not going to cover the damages, that needs to get out there. And we and and people need to understand what, how serious it is if we have to enact something like this. So there's a big communications piece and a public education piece, uh, that follows through with this drought plan. That's it.
Vice Mayor.
Now, this is, um, this is only going to be a little advice, it's not really going to be a question or anything. And that is, in order to implement truly draconian actions that limit, uh, uh, the residents' utilization of, uh, the water service, uh, the town needs to, uh, have a clean record. For instance, the kit, there can't be, uh, six hundred acre feet of of water sitting off in Never Never Land, that somebody might want that someday because there's an obligation. You can't have that and tell other people, well, we're going to, we can't do anything with that, but you have to cut back. Water banking? Got to stop, can't do water banking. In fact, got to probably pull the water out of the bank in order to say to somebody, you need to empty your pool and fill it up with dirt. It, uh, there's a lot of legal stuff that I would think. You know, these are the kind of things I think about if somebody came to me and said, oh, I want, you've got to stop doing this. And I'll say, well, wait a minute, what about that? What about that? It's it's a, uh, a political tactic that's often used. But it is a, uh, but it's it's one that's effective. So that's something that absolutely needs to be done. There need to be checkpoints for what the town has done to justify taking these draconian actions.
And let's follow up with that, you know, I think that when we did the, by having the calculation that sort of shows what we're doing. And you brought the point about, you know, uh, uh, water, uh, future allocations and and encumbrances of the water. The thought this is, this is dealing with actual, the the next year. Again, what do we have for water supplies versus what do we have currently for water demands with any projected growth or savings that we see happening? So it allows us to factor those things. And, you know, when we start dealing about, you know, having someone who has a certificate of assured water supply, that's it's locking up some water. I think this 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 just does address it because that's that right now is available if they're not developing. But if I project that they're developing next year and we're going to use that broader because of right to it, then they're going to have to follow everybody else and that'll factor into it. But I do think the calculation was actually something Michelle suggested, I I'm actually very much in support of it now that I've I've ran through the numbers. I think that allows us as a town to look at our water supplies and our water demands either at least once a year, or we have to get down to looking at quarterly or monthly, depending on how it goes. Uh, yeah, if this drought continues, the next three to four years, there's going to be some large decisions for this town to make as well as almost every, every municipality in in the state. So.
Yeah, well, as, uh, as, uh, soon to be mayor, uh, uh, now council member Morris said, the ranch manana agreement where somebody cleverly left out force majeure.
Saved ink. Saved ink.
Uh, and a lot of other things, uh, you know, somebody needs to take a look at that and find out if what wiggle room there is. I used to deal with laws all the time, I used to deal with contracts. There's almost always some really sneaky way that an attorney could give an opinion, you could do this, even though it looked like he's. Just, just a suggestion.
Thank you.
Other than that, I think is a great plan.
Council's just currently sitting here, so maybe we're done with this one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so what I'm hearing is we we can look at it, um, and hear any significant changes. So what we'll look forward is actually bring it back to council for adoption of this plan, and then we'll start working on the code revisions, bring forth the the council, the change. Since I didn't really hear any significant comments to make, um, I'm fine with bringing it back next meeting for this council to actually adopt it. Since you're the ones who have been discussing it with us, then you've given at least the policy moving forward.
We do have a public comment.
Oh, okay.
And David Phelps, actually, as well.
Oh, David, too?
Yeah, you've had too many comments. What I was going to say, uh.
Your name first.
Oh, right, my name is Holden, uh, Patrick Kors. Is there anything else I need to say first?
Cave Creek resident.
Yes, I'm a Cave Creek resident.
So is your dad.
Yes, uh, Mayor-elect Morris mentioned the agreement slash contract, uh, which would be the correct term with Ranch Manana.
Contract.
And he's supposed to ask me, and then I ask, and then I ask Sean, go ahead, Bill's not here, Bill's not here.
When does this contract expire? Twenty.
Okay, uh, when you're about fifty.
Twenty forty nine is the current end date.
Well, will we even have water left by then?
Okay, he sat down, so it must be Mr. Phelps' turn.
So. This is Morris, Councilmember Morris covered what I was going to cover.
Cool, thank you. All right, so now I'm going to read number nine.
Last item.
Presentation by Will Dan Financial Services and Walker Consulting LLC and discussion on the updates to the draft water and wastewater rate and capacity fee study for the Cave Creek Water, Desert Hills Water and Cave Creek Wastewater Systems. Based on the agenda by the town manager, but I see Sean opening up another file.
Kerry wants to speak.
Hey, there they are, you still awake?
We didn't get to thank Michelle on the last one, she's probably.
I'm sure she's still on, yeah.
And she's still here?
No.
Yeah, I lost her, okay.
I'll I'll pass her thanks along, yeah, she's been a great resource for us.
Tell her we said thanks.
Yeah, we have, uh, Kevin Barnett on, uh, the line with us, uh, tonight, he's, uh, representing Will Dan, and he's been helping us draft this report. So I was going to kick off with a presentation, uh, just to summarize where we're at right now. And then, um, if, uh, there's any questions, uh, we can go from there, so, Brian. Are you guys still hearing me yet tonight?
No comment.
Okay. I'm slowing down. Oh, now I go faster. My regular speed, right? Quick overview, again, we're going to be quick, um, so we have been working with Weather and Financial Services and Walker Consulting, um, to look at the water rates and the capacity fees. Uh, they apply both to our desert hills and our cave creek systems. Um, the last time we did an update to the water, uh, fees were twenty twenty and waste, the the capacity fees actually been in place since twenty, um, fifteen. We had some specific study goals we're trying to attain, we're looking at a ten year forecast period, that was for ten years for, um, uh, the the cost of running the system, the operational costs and also capital needs of the system. Uh, we were looking to try and make sure that between the base rates and volumetric rates, we got as close as we could to a fifty fifty split. Uh, with some of the changes we've made, we're actually a little bit not fifty fifty, um, but that's actually one of the goals we had. Um, and what I highlighted the last two goals is to provide the revenues for ongoing operational and capital costs. It's very important, as you heard from the financial report right now, uh, earlier in the meeting. Um, you know, we're looking good from a revenue projection and in a financial right now at this point. But we actually have to project out, and again, we're looking at ten years, what's it going to cost us to operate this system? You know, the employee cost will rise, healthcare costs rise, and how we have to cover that. The cost of chemicals always go up, the cost of equipment goes up. So that's, this is a really a projection tool. So while you heard a report that says that we're looking good right now, that's for this fiscal year. So this this rate study actually looked out for a ten year planning horizon, that's what everybody to keep in mind. Um, and then we also had to look at the town's financial requirements and goals. Um, you know, we have mentioned about the city of Phoenix interconnect project. We are trying to get a, uh, water infrastructure finance authority loan for that project to pay it off. Um, and then we pay off the the principal and interest on that as a loan. Um, but we actually, actually have to have specific, uh, requirements to get that loan. We have to have a debt, what's called a debt service coverage of one point two times our revenue. And currently, we cannot do that with the current rates that we have, so we could not afford to take on the debt and with what not loan us the the monies, we have to set revenues aside to support being able to pay that debt back. So that's a goal that the council has set, uh, for us, and it's something that we're trying to accommodate with this. So we can do the larger capital that we need for the system. But we're also looking to make sure the revenues are sufficient to cover the operation and maintenance costs. And that's really, the wastewater fund is the one that's is probably the worst, um, in that the, on an annualized basis, the operational cost of that system is not supported by the revenues that we get from our customers. So we need to make them true enterprise funds. And then we do have a long term goal, and this is, uh, with these rates, you know, within sort of a five year horizon, we start getting towards this of having three months worth of operational, uh, revenues in reserve. And that's in case there is a downfall in the economy, people can't pay their water bills, you know, we still need to keep the lights on at the plants and and pay our staff. So having a reserve there is something that's good for us as a practice. I've worked at other facilities or other municipalities where they've got reserves, uh, above six months. You know, we're trying to build up that reserve and this this rate study gets us there. Um, it's sort of, I think it just at the end of the five years is the current projection, we're sort of on track to getting that place, which is a good, good safety net for the town. Uh, so the major issue since twenty twenty, uh, that we, besides the financial that we had to look at, was the loss of the carefree accounts. Um, some of the revenues that you were seeing and why revenues expenses were were looking very good because when we went into this year's budget, we actually, uh, projected that all the carefree customers would actually already be off the system. Um, because of the delay in that project, we're still providing and and water to those customers, which means we have to, uh, pay for delivery, but we're actually getting the revenue from those customers and we're taking off. So we're seeing a little bit of a bump this year and anomaly because of that. But long term, yeah, we're losing five hundred and fifty customers and the revenue from those five hundred and fifty customers. Um, uh, the desert hills connection is something that we didn't truly address, uh, best and that been addressed previously. Um, the desert hills water system does have groundwater wells, but those wells aren't inadequate to supply the demands for the customers out in desert hills. Uh, since the town has owned the system since the end of two thousand and six, uh, we have typically had to provide at least half, if not more, of the water to desert hills to keep wet water in the pipes for customers annually. The last few years, because of the reduction in the groundwater table and the reduction in the production of those wells, that has increased up to seventy five percent of the water being delighted, provided those customers is coming from Cave Creek's water supplies in our water treatment plant. So what we've talked about doing in this rate study does is is develop a a new tie in rate, a wheeling rate for desert hills. You know, I've mentioned, uh, my prior reports to the cap, uh, this, the town has, was able to get a subcontract for Central Zone Project Water. Uh, it's non Indian agricultural water, we we purchased that to self supplement and provide a renewable water supply for desert hills, which they never had before. But there is a cost of that water, that that cost is over, I think, three quarters of a million dollars in back payments that was due on that water rights. Sounds like a lot of money, but trying to buy any acre foot of 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 water rights right now would be a lot more expensive than that. Uh, but we have to pay that bill off and and we've assigned that water to desert hills. And it makes sense that the the rate support paying that debt off, that's one of the reasons for the big increase in the first years to pay that water resource cost off for desert hills. Uh, so we've been working on this, uh, report actually for a while, you know, back in January, we we first kicked it off by discussing project assumptions with the council. And then, uh, we worked through the summer and in August, we came back to, uh, a work session, uh, August twenty third. We followed that up with another work session on the twelfth, uh, and on October seventeenth. And we heard, uh, feedback from council on each meeting, and we went back and had to re-sharpen our pencils and Kevin had to redo his spreadsheets. And we looked at moving monies around and and how to balance between, uh, volumetric rates and base rates. Um, so that brings us to the point we're at right now, uh, which is, uh, the table that's, it's, oh, yeah, go back here. The rates increase and this is, um, uh, what we're proposing is that, uh, council adopt, uh, the next meeting will be these, uh, the rates that are that actually make up these these increases. So on Cave Creek Water, we are looking at, um, uh, you know, this is showing the difference between September, October. October is the rates that we'll be proposing to move forward with in the average increase. Again, Cave Creek Waters going at eight percent for the next, uh, starting January. And then, uh, two years of four percent and followed by, uh, two years of three percent. Uh, we're going to ask that council authorized to have the full five year study and the. We're gonna ask that council authorize to have the full five-year study and the rates put in place. So we don't, unless there's a major need to come back, we at least have these revenue projections in hand. Desert Hills, again, the October projection is what we're, we're proposing to move forward with, which is a twenty-five percent average rate increase for this next upcoming year. Followed by three, five percent and three percent. And then actually the revenues are currently shown that they don't need to increases in the last two years of the five-year study. But again, the first big heavy lift is paying for the water resources for Desert Hills. And Cave Creek Wastewater, again, there's a big heavy lift at the front end, the sixty percent, because there is an imbalance between the revenues generated and the cost of operating that system. So this lift is to undo what we probably should have done in the past and get it towards a true operational functioning system and enterprise fund. And then we have the five percent increases annually beyond that. We did propose in the last study to, or in the study is to do a Desert Hill standpipe rate, which was new. I just wanted to give council a quick update on that. So the equipment for the standpipe had failed. We've been able to get the cost down to about sixteen thousand dollars with some, using some spare parts that we have out there. But we didn't feel it was fair to charge that to everybody and just because there's so limited number of users out there. So in the study, there's actually a fee proposed. It was an extra add of thirteen dollars and thirty-three cents per month for the users out there for getting that standpipe service. At the time, the standpipe went down a few months ago, there was ten active accounts. It says had ten active users because four customers either have already or have asked to have their accounts closed. And then of the other user staff have reached out to them. Three people have said they'd like to continue the service even with the increased rate. And three said they still needed to get back to us. We haven't heard back from them for the last few days. But just, I just wanted to make sure council was aware. It is part of the study. It, our thinking is that we'd ask for that recommendation to have that moving forward. So we're just not gonna generate all the revenue we thought of on that system. But we thought that was the best way to proceed was still to pay to replace that system and put a fee in place for that. It's just the number of users will drop and because we have the water resource policy in effect, we won't be adding any new users to the account unless we can sort out some water resources in Desert Hills. So on our schedule, we've done the notice of intent to raise the rates and capacity fees that we've done in September nineteenth. We've published the final report. We actually found a couple of typos in the report. So there's an updated report. We actually found one typo in the text and then appendix I, which is the fixed asset list for wastewater. There was some confusion in the descriptions for the lands and the dates. That's been corrected. So there was, something brought to my attention the last time we came forth. So right now we're on schedule. We're at the ninth and we're doing the public hearing to allow for outreach and gather public comments and tie or tell council what we have done and what we've heard so far. The goal still being November twenty-first, we asked council to adopt both the, the new rates and the five-year projection for those rates. And then also do the first hearing of the new capacity fees. December fifth would be the second reading of the capacity fees and then everything would become effective January twenty twenty-three. At this point, we actually do our meter reading cycle on the week of the ninth, January ninth, we're thinking of actually making them effective that day. So then as we do media reading, it's an effect for that next cycle of meter read. So it'd be the February bills where customers would see the rate increase and any capacity fees would, would, we probably set the same date on it. I guess it could be its own date, it could be January first too. So what have we done for public outreach? We've had it up for a while now. Was the town, we set up a separate webpage on the town website. It's a cave creek az.gov rates, I believe it is. We also have been listing on the front page, the news and announcements, all these meetings, make sure people can be aware. The webpage itself, we actually have a rate calculator, we circle that sort of the top, on the top left of the page. So you can do a Desert Hills or Cave Creek rate estimator, so someone could go in and just to see what the impact is. And we call it estimator because it doesn't have all the fees in there. It's the best that we could do, but it gives somebody an idea of when they plug in their information on their size of their meter and their current usage, what they will see as an, as an increase for them. And we also have a rate comment section on that webpage. Again, this has been up for six or eight weeks, I believe. So far, we've gathered two comments off the website. The one was for and one was against. That's all we've received. But we've received a lot more outreach actually from our, our lot more feedback from our other efforts that we've done. We've done newspaper notices. We did notices on the water bills themselves, including a direct mailer to all users. So the water users got a notice on their, on their bills saying, please see the rate study and a reference back to the website. And then we're seeing on the side of, on the right side of your page is, is a copy of the flyer that was actually physically mailed out to all users. So we did one for Desert Hills and did one for Cave Creek. So we did a direct mailer to all five hundred, five thousand account holders so that they could see that. We've actually been getting some feedback because of that. So we've been getting calls from our billing staff, have received calls. Most of the calls, I didn't get some numbers today, but the feedback I got is it's been a lot of the Desert Hills customers are calling for two reasons. One is, is error in our mistake because of the font and the abilities on here, we didn't list the fact that there's still boosted rates. There's still boosted rates. So depending on where you are in the system and most of the Desert Hills accounts are actually what we consider boosted rates. So there's an additional surcharge on that to pay for the cost of, it's having to do what we refer to as a second boost. There's an additional booster station. The town core, as we feed water into it from our near booster station and all the customers can be directly fed from near get one rate and then above that, we actually have additional costs. We have additional booster costs and that's been set and that's actually still continued in this. So that was the one confusion. They didn't, that wasn't listed on there. So we had to clarify to them that there's booster rate. Besides for that, there were some concern because of the rate increase, the twenty-five percent and the fairness. And again, it goes back to the fact that, you know, for Desert Hills specifically, as we had to make sure that they had a water resource. And now they have a water resource, but there's a cost for that water resource for their system. Again, and a lot of customers didn't, are still, I don't think understand, but the fact that, you know, the town didn't buy the Desert Hill system to get water resources from it or anything else. They had no water resources. The town bought the Desert Hill system. In addition to the Cave Creek system, and we've been supporting Desert Hills from the Cave Creek Water System since that purchase occurred. So it's, I know it's, it's a hard story and it's a hard thing to understand, I think. But that's what we're trying to unravel with these rates to make sure in twenty twenty, we at least were charging differential rates for the first time for the customers. Now we're really separating it out. So we did the direct mailers. We've been receiving phone calls and we actually went out and we reached out to the high water users. And we defined those as the customers over fifty thousand gallons in usage. We actually had our staff directly call them and, and reach out to them. So there was thirty-eight in Cave Creek and twenty-three in Desert Hills. So we physically called them up. They, the main feedback was, you know, at first they thanked us for calling them, so they knew what was coming. They also wanted you to know how this was gonna impact them. So the staff worked with them to say, this is your, where your current rates are, where your, your buildings have been. This is what, how the impact will be for you. They asked about some things that they can do to save water, which was nice to hear. We talked about what conservations again they do. The staff were having conversations with them about, you know, can they remove turf and go to synthetic grass? What other methods can they do? One thing that came up is a couple of the high water users are actually were one-time leaks that came up. So when we spoke to them, the first thing they came up is how can we better tell them about leaks and notify them about leaks? So they don't get into these high water situations, which goes back to our metering systems. If we can get a metering system that can be given more real-time data, then they're gonna be able to respond more quickly and not have to wait till they get a bill from us and potentially have, you know, a month to two months worth of high water use. So. So I've covered a lot, but yeah, we, I think we've actually done, I feel a fairly good job on both the report itself as well as the outreach we've done to date. And this was just a public hearing, no action tonight to, I just want to give council the briefing where we're at and allow for public comments. Again, we've only received two from the webpage and just more incidental comments that, from the phone calls and the outreach that we've done at this point. So at that point, I will stop talking.
Sean, are those high users typically on one-inch meters? They love larger meters, the ones in the.
Yeah, because again, high water use, we have the five great tiers and the highest rate tier being over fifty thousand gallons.
But these thirty-eight people in town, the twenty-three over, are they, are they typically on one-inch or larger?
They're larger meters and, and about half of them are commercial users. And in fact, we're, the town is actually one of them because the wastewater treatment plant is actually one of the highest water users because it's the water we use for the odor scrubbers and process. So.
That's all I had.
Yeah.
Councilman McGuire.
Individuals who are among these high water users, where, where is a resident, some of these residents that are using fifty thousand? And where are they using it? Massive amounts of landscaping?
It's typically landscaping, outdoor water use. And, you know, some of the conversations we've had, and we found this when we did the last rate study. Because people were upset, we had done that step increase two years ago. And a lot of it's just choice in landscaping that they're not landscaping with a zero escaping desert landscape. They want large lush lands, lawns and they, they're willing to pay for it. Or they want, you know, a different type of a non-native vegetation trees and shrubs.
Wow.
So there, it's a lifestyle choice.
We, we, we're using somewhere around, we're using two, three thousand gallons per month, which is very small.
That's way too much.
And you are too. We talked, I talked with you and you're, you're using a couple thousand.
Dislocate your elbow, pat yourself on the back there.
Mayor question.
What have you done, Tom?
I'm probably very none. Well done.
His councilman's over.
Just one question, Sean. The wheeling agreement that we have or had with Carefree for the three hundred acre feet per year, which was their water, then we made a little money if they called it. Does that go away when the final disconnection of those five hundred and forty houses are done in areas A, B, and C? Or is it still there? I know that there was discussion of that with the.
Yeah, it was, that was part of the agreement we had with them.
Yeah, yeah. It, it will go away. So.
It does not go away.
It does not. So they.
The original wheeling agreement, it says not go away. It is a totally separate thing. The secondary one disappeared.
So they'll still, so what you're saying, Mayor, they'll still be a connection to allow that? Should they ask for that? And it was twenty-five acre feet.
Yes. So the, the American House members, so the, the wheeling agreement that's in place for the town of Cave Creek to treat and deliver a portion of the CAP supply that Carefree has, and they don't have direct access to, to do that, is still in place. So that was part of the settlement agreement. As mentioned earlier, we were talking with Carefree, they, because it's still in place. They, they believe at some point they'll ask for that water. They have not asked for it since two thousand and nineteen. But we are designing to interconnect sites to allow for that and to meter that into the system. The way the contract actually reaches, they, they're supposed to, like we do with the CAP, place an order for the next year in advance and they haven't placed that order yet with us. So it's actually due, due by October or something like that. So I need to probably talk to Greg and it sets a rate structure and it's actually in the contract as far as what we can charge for. With them. But yeah, in nutshell, it is still a valid agreement. It's still in place. It's still legally binding contract with them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else from council? Oh, wait, was there a public comment on this?
We have no public comment.
There is, yeah, everybody. Do we have a motion to adjourn, please?
Mayor, mayor, can we discuss capacity fees? It's, it's a new agenda.
Sure. Discuss.
Oh, okay. I still have a, an issue here with this loan forgiveness. It's nine million dollars that's deducted from the value of the utility. And if I can read this, as existing ratepayers did not pay for the assets, it would be inappropriate to ask. To ask development to pay for them. I don't, I, I can't justify that. Am I the only one who has an issue with this?
Well, there actually was a decision on the council's part to actually say there was no loan. It was a transfer of funds, not a loan, not a forgive loan, not anything that needs to be paid back. That was a decision by the council.
Yeah, yeah. I remember that. And.
And that's it.
That's it.
So how does that get translated into loan forgive deducting nine million dollars from the value of the company?
I have no idea. I don't know. I don't know why it's there because the council, wait a minute. The council did it for water. Council did it for water.
I don't, I don't understand that.
The council made a decision that there was never a loan from the general fund water, Cave Creek Water Utility.
Okay.
That was it. That was the decision. Did not discuss Desert Hills Water, nor did it discuss Cave Creek Gas Source System.
But how does that justify deducting nine million dollars? Please.
Kevin, you got any idea?
Yes. So, so the, the idea behind what we're trying to do with the capacity fees is that new development that's coming in is supposed, is going to be buying into the system and in effect reimbursing existing development for the investments that they've made into the system. So this nine million dollars that came from the general fund didn't come from existing development through rates. It came from some other source. So if we were to ask future development to pay that nine million dollars, they'd be reimbursing existing development for a payment that was never made by them directly through their rates themselves. So in that case, we'd be reimbursing somebody for something that they didn't actually pay for. So that's why the deduction is being made.
Could it just be a semantical issue? Using the term loan forgiveness versus some other term?
Yes, yes.
Good. Thank you. How was it determined that the, the, the money from the general fund came from ratepayers?
It didn't.
It didn't.
It didn't.
It's nothing to do with that. So how did it, let me reverse it then. How was it determined that it didn't come?
It added to the value of the system.
Yeah. Agreed.
That's it.
The, the system is an asset of, of the community. And what we, we did is we had, we had to feed the asset more than it was bringing us and they, it accumulated that, those, those numbers. And we basically, for the general fund, as the council, we essentially had the general fund forgive the utility for subsidizing them for that length of time because the asset in the long run is gonna be a big deal. As long as we don't run out of water in Lake Maide.
Here in six years, we'll celebrate.
Right.
There you go, Dave.
But I still can't, how did we identify the money from the general fund that did not come from ratepayers? When you pay, when you pay your utility bill, because town of Cave Creek, money goes into the general fund.
It was beyond, it was, it was, it was. How do I say this? It was.
May I, may I give it a try?
Please.
Please.
When, when the, when the enterprise funds did not generate enough cash, they went to deficit. Well, we still paid the bills. That money came out of the general fund.
Right.
There was no loan. There was no, nothing. It was automatic.
Right.
The decision was made because the accounting was so bad that we couldn't identify whose ox was gored. We couldn't find out who to. things to. So the decision was made at that time that we weren't going to ask the ratepayers in Cave Creek to reimburse the general fund or the wastewater system, the reimbursement general fund. And we couldn't identify between desert hills and everybody else. So we kind of drew a line in the sand and said, from this time forward, we're not, we're going to stop subsidizing. And that's one of the reasons for the rate increases and things we're seeing today is we're going to get those systems on a paying basis. And the, I, I'm not sure. So that's where that money came, but it, it never came from the water system. It came out of the, out of the general fund.
Which had ratepayer money in it. The general fund, wait a minute, the general fund has.
It's a negative. How can I have ratepayer money if it's negative?
When I pay my water bill.
It just goes out of the general fund.
It does go to the general.
No, 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 no.
It goes into the defined enterprise funds is when that, that, that revenue comes into the town, there actually are the defined revenue, revenue sense. For a while I understand that they were combined together into one fund and it's been broken out. So we now currently operate the three separate revenue operational funds. We break up the revenues and the expenditure separately. And then we subdivide within that. So we can break it down to more detail, but it, it come, it doesn't go into the general fund. Same thing as if.
But it did.
Well, you know, argue about where it came, but we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor.